Crazy.
We're not in the house, I'm like that.
No, our house is up. I don't know that ever, I mean, there's a couple of them. Maybe, in the neighborhood, for sure.
Hey, Cheryl? One more time, sorry. Ashlyn, did we get you all day? Exciting.
All right, thank you.
Red, 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 did some research.
That's about it. So, um...
Hi.
One of our home grounds here in the county is on the, what's it called, the USS Cole?
Mm-hmm.
The one that just moved into Israel.
Mm-hmm.
One of our home grounds is on that ship.
At what point?
I mean, like in our...
My theme for the invocation? Do you have his name?
I don't want to say his name because he's high intelligence.
Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners meeting. Today is August 6th, 1:00 P.M. Commissioner Bays just let me know, and perhaps our pastor will make a note of this. One of our homegrown Citrus County people is deployed on the USS Cole, which has just moved into Israel territory. So, let's take a little extra special. We always love all of our first responders in our military, no matter where they're from, but one of our own is in harm's way. So, we have with us today Pastor Stephen Miller, Redemption Point Assembly of God in Immerness. He will be giving the invocation. And then after that, we have Master Sergeant Luis Sanchez, 22 years, Air Force retired. Has one heck of a resume in the military, including enduring freedom and all over the world. One thing that I spoke with him about the meeting is that he's deploying artistic skills for a Citrus County Veterans Assistance mural. And having, being active back home and with a heart for service, we're very appreciative for your service, sir. And with that, if you would like to stand and join us for the invocation and then the pledge, thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen in attendance. If you would be so kind, and if you're able and willing, would you bow your heads and hearts in prayer to open the meeting today? First and foremost, we would like to pray for the prayer, pray for the safety and safe return of our soldiers who are, who are being deployed, Lord. And we pray for your hand of protection over them, on them, and around them, Lord, that, that they would return safe, Father. We just, we just pray that today in your mighty name. Heavenly Father, we give you praise, and we thank you for this opportunity to come together today and, and work on the business of our great county, Citrus County. We're grateful and thankful for a growing and a prosperous county, Lord. And we thank you for our elected officials who lead it well. Lord, we pray over the proceedings and the deliberations today, that you would be honored in all of it. We pray over our Commissioners, that they would have the wisdom and grace in dealing with the details and the inner workings of, of our county, Lord. And, and Father also, that you would help them as they navigate tough policies. And also, Lord, help them as they navigate tough personalities. And Lord, we, we thank you for all of that. We thank you for your constant guidance and wisdom, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Master Sergeant?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners, this 6th day of August, 2024. In attendance are Chair Holly Davis, First Vice Chair Rebecca Bays, Second Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Ruthie Schlebaugh, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamondlin.
Thank you. Mr. Howard?
Just a few items for additional information. H2, Public Hearing Stormwater MSBU, Citizen Written Objection to MSBU. Also, for H2, additional information and pertinent information in reference to the reposition of the Stormwater Assessment MSBU. Also, H5, Presentation Added to Road Resurfacing Agenda Item. That's all I have. Oh, there's one more, actually, one more item here. Additional item P1, To Set an Attorney/Client Session. And that's all I have.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Move to approve the agenda with the additional information.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any board comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consent Agenda, would you like to take it in its entirety?
Motion to approve Consent Agenda.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Schlebaugh. Is there any public comment on the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, C.
Motion to approve C1, C2, and C3.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Those representing International Overdose Awareness Day, if you could please come forward. Whereas Citrus County, Florida supports policies of the Florida Department of Health to highlight the dangers of substance use disorder and overdose within our community, accidental drug overdose is the leading cause of death for people under the age of 45. And whereas more than 13 million people received treatment for substance use disorder in the past year, substance use disorder costs the U.S. economy an estimated $13 billion each year. And whereas in 2023, 80 Citrus County residents died of substance overdose, and the Florida Department of Health in Citrus County, in partnership with the county, has assembled a task force and developed a work plan to address drug use and addiction within our community. And whereas community partners and members can remember loved ones who have died from drug overdoses and take action to prevent future overdoses by implementing evidence-based community-wide harm reduction strategies, and now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, hereby recognizes August 6th, 2024 as International Overdose Awareness Day and encourages all government entities, businesses, students, parents, and residents within the county to become aware of the dangers of substance use disorder and to recognize the signs of an overdose. Executed the 6th day of August, 2024.
My name is Catherine DeFranco, and I represent the Florida Department of Health in Citrus County, as well as the Citrus County Opioid Task Force. There were 80 Citrus County residents who lost their lives last year due to drug overdoses. Each one of those deaths could have been prevented if more evidence-based harm reduction strategies were in place, and if more people were aware of this serious problem. This Overdose Awareness Day, we encourage everyone to carry naloxone, also known as Narcan. Overdoses are happening everywhere. The more of us who are armed with naloxone, the more lives we can potentially save. Thanks.
Those representing Breastfeeding Support Month, if you could please come forward. Whereas breast milk is the preferred and most appropriate source of nutrition for infants adapting over time to meet the changing needs of the growing infant. The nutrients exclusive to human milk cannot be manufactured. Breastfeeding promotes overall health, growth, and development, and helps to prevent infections, as well as asthma, obesity, diabetes, and other chronic illnesses in childhood into adulthood. And whereas breastfeeding benefits a mother's postpartum recovery and decreases the risk of ovarian and uterine cancers, diabetes, and heart disease. And whereas breastfeeding is recognized by the Florida Department of Health, Florida West Coast Breastfeeding Task Force, and all major medical authorities as the healthiest method of infant feeding, the Surgeon General's call to action to support breastfeeding highlights that if 90% of U.S. babies were breastfed exclusively for six months, the nation would save an estimated $13 billion per year in healthcare costs. And whereas, World Breastfeeding Week is recognized during the first week of August and is a global initiative to raise awareness of the benefits of breastfeeding, with the 2024 theme being Closing the Gap: Breastfeeding Support for All. And Black Breastfeeding Week is recognized during the last week of August, focusing on the racial disparity in breastfeeding rates and the unique cultural barriers among Black women, which is linked to high Black infant mortality rate. Black Breastfeeding Week also aims to promote diversity in the lactation field and reduce first-food desserts in Black communities. And whereas Florida West Coast Breastfeeding Task Force recognizes it is vital for families to make informed choices about the health of their infants and supports increased efforts by hospital staff, providers, employers, and all Floridians to not only encourage, but to promote tangible support for breastfeeding. And now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County does hereby proclaim the month of August 1st through the 31st, 2024, as Breastfeeding Support Month, and encourage all citizens to join in this worthy observance. Executed the 6th day of August, 2024.
Hi, my name's Felicia DeLuca, and I'm here representing the Florida Department of Health in Citrus County. August is National Breastfeeding Awareness Month. Breastfeeding is a cornerstone of health, providing countless benefits for both mother and child. And your support helps ensure that our community has the resources, education, and encouragement needed to thrive. Citrus County continues to work to increase breastfeeding initiation and duration rates through increased education, the free infant feeding line, and offering free lactation services to mothers in our county regardless of income. Our initiation rate is currently the highest it's ever been, at 83%. Thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for your support. It sends a powerful message to our community that we value and support the essential role of breastfeeding.
If we can please have Todd Dunn, Chief Information Officer, please come forward.
I'm gonna read this while Todd comes forward. Todd Dunn was hired September 6th, 1994, as a Computer Systems Administrator in the Management Services Division of the Technical Services Department, which later became the Information Systems Division of the General Services Department. On March 24th, 1997, he was promoted to Information Systems Coordinator in the Information Systems Division. On May 25th, 2010, the Department of Systems Management was created. On February 14th, 2017, Todd was promoted to Chief Information Officer of the Systems Management Department. Prior to his time at Citrus County, he served five years in the United States Navy, where he supported the photographic needs of the sea and shore-based commands, trained junior personnel, and was a systems administrator of PC-based maintenance and material management system. He was honorably discharged at the end of his service. We want to thank Todd for his loyalty and dedication to the citizens of Citrus County. I'm gonna present this plaque to him, I'm just gonna read it. Presented to Todd Dunn, Chief Information Officer, for your loyal and dedicated service to the Citrus County, Florida Board of County Commissioners and its citizens, September 6th, 1994 to September 6th, 2024. So, pretty punctual to get it right like that. So, congratulations, it's not goodbye, it's till we see it again, and he's gonna go off to some amazing things he's gonna do. But we appreciate your teamwork, all the great things that you've done. You will be missed, but not forgotten, and we, we got your cell phone numbers, we can get ahold of you and everything. So...
Congratulations, Todd.
Chair, before we continue, my apologies. May I get clarification on a previous motion from A4? It was made by Commissioner Schlebaugh, seconded by Commissioner Kennard. Commissioner Schlebaugh said motion to approve the agenda with the additional information, and we have an additional item in there as well. I wasn't sure if she wanted to clarify.
Yes, ma'am, with the additional item. Thank you.
Commissioner Kennard?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Gonna do open to the public. Anyone who would like to address the commission, you get three minutes, unless you have a letter on file, let us know, and then you get five. If you do have a letter on file, please watch the timer.
Chair?
Yes?
Sorry.
What?
We have a 1:15?
Oh. Oh, okay, never mind.
Thought before you got started.
Thank you. We never have a 1:15, I thought it was 1:30. We will not be opening to the public. I'll have to do the whole spiel again. All right.
Sorry.
Flip into the H's. Aviation attorney.
Yes, Commissioners, if you'll recall from your workshop, your aviation workshop, the board gave direction to, for us to procure an aviation attorney, an attorney who is much more familiar with aviation issues than any, than myself or anyone in my office. So, we undertook requests of other jurisdictions in the state to see who they worked with. We wound up getting conversations started with two separate firms, and we have for you today, in your backup information, Mr. Chris Wilson, who's from Orlando, that we have brought forward to you for your consideration.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Board, what's your pleasure?
And Mr. Wilson is here, if, if the board would like to hear from him.
Yeah, me too.
All right. Come on up.
Hi. Good afternoon.
Just state your, yeah, state your, good afternoon, state your name for the record.
Absolutely. Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name is Chris Wilson. It's 1636 Hillcrest Street in Orlando, Florida. And I have been practicing airport law since 2008 in the state of Florida, you know, representing clients like Orlando International, Orlando Executive, Kissimmee, doing very much the same type of work that you all need here. Had some brief conversations about what the issues are, and I specialize in airport law relating to leases, FAA compliance, minimum standards, non-aeronautical leases, FAA land use, a lot of the things that it sounds like you, you may need here in Citrus County.
Okay. Commissioner Bays, do you wanna ask any questions?
Well, if this goes as I hope that does today, welcome. The only thing I guess I would like to impress is that, you know, time is of the essence. I think we have a majority of what we've done in the past needs some significant attention, and it needs cleaned up sooner rather than later, particularly as it relates to our leases. And I, are you familiar with ICE? Our consultant that worked on our airport?
I was provided the, the information.
Okay, great.
Yes, I did review some of that in advance to, in order to speak with Ms. Diamondlin, but we'll dive into that, for sure.
Perfect. I think they've made a lot of great recommendations, and I would encourage you to, with staff, to work with Daniel at ICE, and hopefully we can come to some resolution. And I would also ask staff, back a few months ago on our agenda, we had a list of 20 suggestions, and we voted on to implement 16 of those, this being one of them, hiring an FAA attorney. So, I'm glad to see this moving along, appreciate you being here, and look forward to working with you.
Absolutely, same.
Commissioner Schlebaugh?
Good morning, Mr. Wilson. Thank you for your applying for this, thank you for your resume, it was quite impressive. Hundred million dollars to the Airport Capital Projects Budget, that's a pretty big deal. We are not on that scale, but we would like a piece of that if we bank. But I just wanted to talk to you about, as the Immerness Airport and the Immerness Airport Business Park was, is my number one initiative as a Commissioner. I've kinda turned it over to the Commissioner whose district it is in, but I still, on the, on the out, you know, the backside, I'm paying attention. And I wanna talk about growth management, and as things come forward, and, and you can help us with the different leases, but a lot of these things are economic development and very fast-paced, need to make a decision. And no offense to our very skilled attorney that we have on staff, thank you, but I think that I would like to talk to the board or have a discussion about Mr. Wilson really going directly to our administrator, because as you know, some of these projects, we can't get it mired in the, the cogs of the wheel, you know? Coming from private sector, I'm, I'm getting used to the molasses I walk into, but I, I think we need to speed this up a little bit, and I just wanted to bring that up to the board and see what they thought about that. But thank you, I, I look forward to working with you and hearing from you and, and the suggestions you give us. Thank you.
Commissioner Kennard, your light's on.
Yes. I, I wanna respond to something that Commissioner Schlebaugh just brought up, and then I will make a motion to retain Mr. Wilson. It is, it is our county attorney's job to look out for this board, the county's best interest legally, and I would not want, while I have a tremendous amount of respect for Mr. Wilson, I would not want, I would not want his advice or his findings, stuff like that, to bypass our legal watchdog for the county and, and the board. So, while I understand I want this to move through as quickly as possible, I do think that it needs to pass across her desk and going to, going to Steve's desk, or ultimately in front of us. So, with that being said, I would make a motion to, to approve retaining Mr. Wilson as our aviation attorney.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Schlebaugh. I also, I don't, or, was it Bays? My apologies. Must be going deaf in this here, just like Kennard. I do have a, I do have a comment. So, obviously, we have the business park, and then we also have, we only have one aviation business park, and that's at Immerness. And then we both, we have two traditional, small, local airports. And that's two different sides of economic development. One is maybe or maybe not aviation-related businesses that go into the business park, but they need access to the airport. And then others is just general businesses that need hangars. We have shut down doing any work with people who want ground leases to build hangars, to put their own capital into our land, and those have been pushed back and pushed back and pushed back for a very long time. So, as I've been trying to argue, we can't stop doing business seeking to be perfect. We need to move forward. But in conference with staff, they said that you might be able to expedite some of those ground leases that are not more, the more complex stuff to get those done. Is that the case?
As soon as we get going, we'll start going through it, and the goal, and my, my approach is always, you know, trying to work to a solution. And so, looking at the FAA regulations, I think some of that is getting that in place for you guys with some rules that will allow those things to proceed. And I have a lot of experience in doing that for their...
Good. Well, you may know I have an aviation background, but I certainly don't have an attorney background. So, I've never wanted to be an engineer and, and an attorney more in my life than this role. So, anyway, do we have any public comment on this matter?
As Ms. Barak is coming forward, just that motion included me signing the retainer agreement.
Yes.
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 Good afternoon, Janet Barak, Citrus Springs. Having worked with different attorneys and different fee schedules, I was really happy when I read through the backup material that the cost per hour is...
I can't hear you, Janet.
You turned it off, there you go.
Okay. All right, Janet Barak, Citrus Springs resident. Having worked with several attorneys for different organizations, I was very, very happy to read in the backup material, the cost per hour that this attorney, Mr. Wilson, and is going to provide to county. It is well in line with what other attorneys in Citrus County charge. And that, I, made me feel really good that we weren't going out on a, a big limb to pay exorbitant prices. We need an attorney to assist our attorney, Denise Lynn, because it is a lot of overwhelming things coming to her all at one time, with the growth of our county moving as fast as it is. And we do need to get the airports on some sort of schedule so we can see positives. And I think it's a wonderful thing that Mr. Wilson has agreed to work for us for the price that he has agreed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, any further board discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Though I do realize that Commissioner...
Though I do realize that Commissioner Kennard is our senior Commissioner, I don't feel that his comment is written in stone. So, I would like to have a little discussion about this, and how it could, you know, I didn't say cut Denise Lynn out, but I think that we need to find a path to make things move faster, and I would like to have that discussion, rather than just go with what Mr. Kennard's motion is. So, I, I think that there's a way to make it where it doesn't have to be slowed down months and months, because our county attorney is overworked. But the whole reason behind getting an attorney, an FAA attorney, is to go over issues that is not Ms. Lynn's specialty. So, could you please explain how sending it back through to Ms. Lynn is gonna speed up the process or make a difference?
I'm gonna ask Madam Attorney to address that, if she has an opinion.
I mean, I don't understand, I mean, is, are, are you suggesting that I, I'm taking too long to do thi, like, I don't, I don't understand. I, I oversee all of the outside counsel, Neighbors Giblin, Dale Scott, Susan Spurgeon. I pretty much oversee all of our outside counsel and coordinate the different litigation, the arbitrations and so forth. So, I don't know why this outside counsel would be any different than other outside counsel.
Are you saying it's a tiny fraction of your time versus doing it yourself, then?
It is, and, I mean, I agree with y'all that I don't have the level of expertise that Mr. Wilson has, and, and I was very pleased to, you know, seek an attorney. I had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Wilson and another firm. Those folks, they, they know their stuff. And I would never begin to suggest that I had the level of expertise that they did. Hopefully, that he can do the aviation stuff faster than I can, and I'll certainly do my best to make sure that I don't cog, cog anything up or take any longer to, to, I, I won't get in his way, I guess is what I'm saying.
Thank you. Does that do anything to assuage your concern?
Yeah, I just wanna, I'm just, government moves too slow. I wanna, I wanna speed this up. And I, I know from many conversations with Ms. Lynn, she, she, you have a big workload. And I thought the whole reason why to get this attorney was to kind of facilitate that. But whatever the Board decides is fine. I just wanted to put that idea out there, that perhaps we could, you know, move things along. And you brought it up yourself. You made a perfect example. These leases, we've been waiting and waiting and waiting. So, you know, if you, if you guys are okay with that, that's fine. It has nothing to do with Ms. Lynn. I just want to see government move, move. Let's go.
I've got three people that want to speak, apparently, so.
I just want to say that we, I think, being the county attorney, have a great relationship. So, we've actually, I think I made a lot of strides together in the last few months, and I compliment her staff whenever I, I can, as, as well. So, I think we're working in tandem, quickly and swiftly that we can. Sometimes there's bottlenecks, I'm, it could be on our side, too. I mean, on our side of it, too. So, anything we can do that, I'm committed to working with any and everybody, and I'm confident that together, we can continue to blaze a trail in all these areas. So, that's my commitment to work with everyone. And I just wanted to let the Board know, we are, we, we have a, I think, I think the strongest relationship, I think, we've ever had right now. So, we're doing a lot, lot of stuff together, and actually spent a lot of hours together last week for the county's business. I think the most I've actually said still, I don't like to sit still, I like to get stuff done, go, go, go. So, sometimes these timelines aren't really what I, what I like, because I'm used to cutting red tape, getting things done. There's a process, but I just want to make sure the public and the Board knows, we have a really good relationship.
Mr. Hall?
Chair Commissioners, Carlton Hall, Interim Public Works Director. So, I just want you to know that we haven't stopped on the airports. When we got the direction from the Board, we went ahead and moved forward. ICE, as part of that presentation, started putting these leases together for us. We currently have a land lease as well as a hangar lease for Mr. Wilson to review right away.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, looks like you had something on your mind. Did you want to say anything? Nope? All good? Ms. Bays? Mr. Bays?
Well, I just would like to make a couple of comments. Going back to the fact that this is very specialized law field, and that's why we're asking Mr. Wilson to come onboard. There's been a, a huge mess in all of these leases, things that have happened over the years, a lot of inconsistencies, and we need some uniformity in these leases. And there is a sense of urgency to get this done. And again, the Inverness Airport, probably, in my opinion, needs three structures of leases. So, I think they're all very different. If you're bringing money to the table and you're providing economic development and bringing jobs, that's one type of lease, versus somebody that just wants to park their plane in a hangar and take up space for X number of years, and potentially lease that hangar out and make money off of us. So, that's a completely, another lease, in my opinion. So, you know, there's a lot to be done. I, I think, again, as the Administrator mentioned, I think we have a great team, but we do need to work quicker rather than later. And, you know, this airport, we've been hanging on. I'm hoping that the new Economic Development Director is, got his feet under him, he's ready to hit the ground, because I think there's still a lot of unanswered questions out there that people, I know I want answers, but I'm ready to put the team back together. We've had, we've been fragmented, but I'm ready to get to work on it. There's been, there's been a lag in time here, and it, and it's time to get moving again, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Bays. Is there any further comment, Board comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Welcome aboard, Mr. Wilson.
Congratulations.
Thank you all very much. I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you. And thanks for coming over. All right, H2. Time certain.
Commissioners, H2 is a public hearing for a proposal or reimposition of the stormwater MSBU for fiscal year 2425. So, I, I passed out something like a little informational on stormwater and what it's for. This program started back in September, or, excuse me, September of 2021, I want to say. So, basically, it's to allow the county, because we are required by the state, and we have a permit to take care of stormwater for the county. The recommendations that you have before you are to re-impose the exact same amount for each unit that we had in previous years, no increase.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Carl, when did you say this started?
I'm pretty sure it was September of 2021.
And tell me, how does stormwater work with the NFEPD rules?
So, based on the permit that we currently have, we, we have certain goals that we have to meet, as far as how many structures we clean out a year. We work really closely with Road Maintenance, who does a lot of our in-house work. Anything that would be related to stormwater, such as a mowing of a roadside that had a swale or a ditch in it, all the way to taking care of DRAs throughout the county, that we identify and maintain our stormwater system.
And as far as our funding mechanism, how, what does the funding look like versus what we're expending?
So, as of right now, since the program got into start, we, we've hired certain consultants that are on our continuing service list, that have identified certain areas throughout the county that we have a certain localized flooding in, and they are developing plans. We've already started construction on a few of those, and they're developing plans to alleviate that flooding in those areas, either by purchasing property to add additional DRAs, or putting in stormwater structures to alleviate that water from standing in one place and moving it back out.
So, again, going back to my question, as far as our funding mechanism, which is our MSBU, what we're collecting versus what we're expending?
So, so last year, we collected just over $5 million for the stormwater fee. This year, we are expecting 5.15, roughly five million for stormwater. And I believe the fund currently has just over $3 million in it. Of course, a lot of the projects that we have are prepped and ready to go out to construction. So, once those designs are completed, you'll be seeing a lot of those construction bids coming through and awards based on the stormwater funds.
So, my last question is, I believe it was the last Board of County Commission meeting that I discussed Pinellas County being able to get their flood rating down to a two, which, if you can get, and, and they spent a lot of money through stormwater to get there. So, on the west side of our county, which is where we have the significant flooding issues, is there a way to do more stormwater mitigation that can help get our rating down so that that community rating can get passed on to the consumers?
Absolutely. Yeah, currently, we're, we're trying to find those areas where, as the sea level rises and we get that flooding, especially on an event like we had in the last two days, we're trying to get understanding of where that water stays, and ways that we can get that water back out, rather than it ponding and flooding roads and homes. And so, we have stormwater team through Technical Services that are identifying these locations. And as they identify them, we get plans put together, ideas on how to best alleviate that flooding. And since it was put in place in 2021, we've, we've come a long way. If you want, I could get a little synopsis for you and send it out to each one of you to show what's been done in the past, and what projects we have scheduled for the next 12 months.
I think that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd really want to see that myself. I believe the reason that we did that in '21 was because of some state mandates came down, which were even to include, I believe, street sweepers at some point.
It is, yeah. We have a subcontractor that we have that we use for street sweeping as well. The county put into place our own street sweeper that Road Maintenance runs for us.
Right. So, just in general, this is for stormwater for the entire county. A lot of folks believe that they collect all their stormwater, so they shouldn't have to pay into it, which might be okay, as long as you need, never leave your property. But as long as you're moving about the county, you are benefiting from all the stormwater activities that we do.
Correct.
So, okay. And there's no change from last year, so I'm good with it. All righty. Any other questions for Mr. Hall? All right, when we open the public hearing, would anybody like to speak for or against this matter? Please come to the mic. You get three minutes. Please watch the clock, so I don't have to interrupt you at the end. It'll go, it'll be green for the first two minutes, and then yellow for the last minute, and then red when it buzzes. And state your name for the record, please.
All right. Good afternoon, County Commissioners. My name is Scott Brightwell, and my parcel ID number is 1013127. And I'm here to voice my objection, because my property is being proposed to be charged stormwater service assessment. Now, as this gentleman just mentioned, he said this is for the whole county, not just the stormwater on my property, but that's not how I'm being assessed ESUs. I'm being assessed ESUs, and I can read it off of this letter I received here. It says, "Based on the amount of stormwater generated by my impervious surfaces on my property." So, it has nothing to do with the roads that I drive, or the ditches, or whatever that are along there. Now, I just recently built, and when I built here just about a year ago, my plans had to include stormwater management as defined by Citrus County. I also had to install a detention area on my property, plus swells. I had to install gutters to collect that runoff off of my roof that I'm being charged ESUs on, to collect that water to be run out to the swells and to the detention area. And I had to pay for all of that. That was extra on top of my contract, because that wasn't included. My contract was for building the house, not for managing stormwater. And now, I'm being told that it has nothing to do with my property, it's all the streets I drive. So, I'm confused here, why I'm being charged ESUs on the amount of runoff from my property, and I'm estimated as 1.7 ESUs by the square footage, and divided by some numbers in here, you can read over that. So, if you could explain that to me, why the streets that I drive would have anything to do with my property size? And plus, I was limited to the amount of non-pervious surfaces. I needed a larger driveway, I need more sidewalk, but I was denied that because of the amount of impervious surface for the property.
Sir, actually, you're supposed to be addressing me, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just, I, I take, I take all the anger up here.
All right. No, that's all right. I'm not angry. I'm not angry. I'm sorry. I don't want to be that guy that Pastor referred to as, what'd he say?
So, there's a couple of different things, but, but the way this works is that everyone comes up and speaks, and then when everyone's done, we will address issues.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your coming up. And to be fair to you, I did not give the instruction about addressing me, so, my bad, not yours.
Janet Barick, Citrus Springs. When this initially started, I was against it, because I didn't understand 100% of what was gonna happen. Because the way it was brought out, this MSBU, you know, you didn't say that it was for the entire county, and all the different things that Mr. Hall was gonna be doing with the funds. Now that he's given it, it makes a little bit more sense. I do appreciate the fact that he is keeping the MSBU the same, and that's what he's asked for, it's the same as the year before. I just want to make sure that he takes the $3 million he has, plus the $5 million he's gonna get from the taxes this year, and make sure that he spends it properly, and we don't keep sitting on $3 million in the checking account as a carryover every year. That's the biggest, you know, problem that I have with it. Other than that, I am very glad we are keeping expenses down. And I understand what he's talking about now. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this topic, for or against? Going once? Going twice? Close public, close the public hearing? Mr. Hall, would you like to address any of that, talking about exemptions and, and so forth? Because I, as a note to you, sir, I, I understand the frustration. Government drives all of us crazy, even us, and we're supposedly part of it. It's, it's very difficult to understand, so hopefully, Mr. Hall will be able to shed some light.
So, some of those requirements come from the LDC, and not this stormwater assessment. So, there are mitigation credits for certain things that property owners do on their own property, to treat and maintain their own stormwater.
I'm sorry, I meant that other than exemptions. Carry on.
So, there's an affidavit that can be filled out. I'll, I'll get with, with him before the end of the meeting, make sure he understands who to contact, to see if he qualifies for those credits.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there any Board discussion? Commissioner Bays?
I would like some information on those mitigation credits to understand as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Finnegan?
I thought both speakers at the podium made some valid points. So, I'm prepared to vote yesterday, only because I know the $5,154,971.24 must be paid. So, a yes vote from the Board today is a vote to, on your tax bill, to have it say stormwater, and then you see the amount that it can only go to stormwater. A no vote from this Board today is just so you don't see that line item, but the money still has to come in the budget. And I do understand with our first speaker, because he's right about the property, you're assessed by impervious service, but it, it really doesn't have to do with your property, which, to me, made sense. It was a Board before me, that it came from the general fund, and we have to pay it, it's a mandate. Just curious, for those that are sitting here, the five-point, let's just call it 5.15 million, Erin, she's like, dang it, she's, you know, the, the other option is finagle that into the budget of where we have it. So, I, I guess if we can do that, in essence, it would be a tax saving to our, to our people of the 58 or 100 and something dollars, or whatever the, the property is assessed. So, that would be something to look at, because again, if we're voting no, we're, you're still paying for it, it's just how you're paying for it. So, we, I guess we need to look at those two options. Thank you.
Commissioner Bays?
I do hear Commissioner Finnegan, but this is not going away, and it's never gonna get cheaper. So, regardless of whether you, I mean, it, it was put in as an MSBU, so that you would have those allocated fundings every year, and you know exactly what's being spent on that. And controversy to that, as that number would get bigger every year, we're faced with what comes out of the general fund. And as, as time goes on, the state keeps implementing more and more mandates down to the county, and we have to find money. And the general fund, the ad valorem, is just not going to keep pace with that. So, I would not support that. I support having an MSBU where that can be implemented in, and I, because my goal at some point is to have designated pots of money, either through MSBUs or MST. either through MSBUs or MSTUs and get the general uh fund millage down to about 3 and 1/2, 3.6. And then everybody knows exactly where their funds are being spent if you have these designated pots of money. So I I will not support taking this out of general fund. I I would keep it in the designated funding.
Commissioner Schleba?
I agree. I had, in 2021, I voted to only implement 50% of this fee because I didn't think we were on target to get that work done that very first year. And I didn't think it was right to collect but um 100% of it and not do 100% of the work. But we now are moving forward and um we essentially dodged a bullet this weekend and um this will be far more expensive if we don't implement this, which we have to anyway from the state. But I believe that it should stay, uh you know, it should be the MSBU so that citizens know exactly what's happening and where we are and we can be more accountable and transparent. So I I agree with Commissioner Bays.
Thank you. Commissioner Cannard?
Yeah, it sounds like we're all saying the same thing or expressing the same thing. These are expensive projects. But it does help to clean up the stormwater that runs off into our lakes and rivers uh and off into the Gulf as well. And um, you know, this MSBU, uh as as Commissioner Finnegan said, you know, it's either um, it's either getting paid on a line item or we've still got to find this money in the in the uh in the general uh general fund. And um, you know, this just, this adds greater transparency to it. So I am excited to see the uh the list of projects that are that are in the works and those that are proposed. Uh I think um uh maybe getting those things on our, on the county's website would help people to better understand uh where this where this money's going. You know, I doubt there's too many of us that are very excited about paying for str- street sweeping. Uh but um many, if not most of us uh are happy that the county is doing something uh to clean up the stormwater runoff. So I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. I agree with you, Commissioner Cannard and Bays very much. I do think the more we have MSBUs and TUs and reduced millage, the better for everyone um for the whole community. And it should be noted that Red Tide is just a couple of counties south of us. And we we have to keep our waters clean if we want to be the nature coast. So stormwater has a direct impact on our lakes, our rivers, and the Gulf of Mexico. So would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve H2A and B.
Actually, I think it's just B because I connected, yeah.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner um Bays, second by Commissioner Cannard. Any further board discussion?
Well, you got more?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I thought you had more public input.
Did he? Sir, did you want to get with staff about possible? I need to keep this moving, but if you wanted to get with staff about possible credit. Anyway, did you have something to say or are you just getting ready to vote?
Just getting ready to.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
No.
Motion carries unanimously. All right. Who's running this one? Mr. Cheek?
The award-winning.
Good afternoon, Chair, Board members. This is our annual utility availability assessment whereby we assess vacant property owners for their portion of the operation and maintenance costs to keep the lines in front of their properties for their benefit. The numbers are unchanged for this year. So we're asking that you hold the public hearing and at the conclusion of that, if you see fit, to take action on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Cheek. Board, have any questions for him before I open the public hearing? Seeing none, I open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak for or against? Item H3. Going once, going twice, close the public hearing. Board?
I'll make a motion to per- approve H3B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Who's up? Is that Adam Attorney? Nope. Here comes Ms. Katu. We're faster than you thought.
I don't know if the applicant is present. I don't know who they look like. Is the applicant present for rental of Inverness? Yeah, okay.
Just have a seat in the front row and
He can speak if he wants to.
Okay.
It's up to you. You want to talk or you want to let me? They usually say that. All right, this is a request for um to vacate several utility easements. Uh this is the property on State Route 44. And this board has heard these before in this area between 44 and Thomas Street in Inverness. Inverness Highlands Unit 1 did have these uh easements in place. Even Dunkin' Donuts in the area did go through this process, although that was some time ago. So this is an area of the applica- of the easement site. You can see there, they've got a lot of uh property on 44 and a few lots on Thomas Street. And in reality, you would never know these easements are here. Here's one of them. And here's the other between these buildings. So vacating this particular easement area would allow them to develop and and not have to jump the easements for pavement, which is the way the situation is right now. Um staff did review this application and had no concerns. Utility companies that service the area also had no concerns. And that's it.
Mr. Webster, did you want to say anything? No, just roll on. Okay. We're going to open a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak for or against H4? Going once, going twice. Close public hearing. Board?
Madam Chairman, I move to approve H4B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schleba, second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, sir. All right, H5. And then we're going to go to open to the public.
Carl's back up.
Oh, I think he stepped out with the stormwater gentleman. All right, time for a break. I'll be right back.
Welcome back.
Thank you. We're going to wait for
No, go ahead. Get started.
All right, so based on the uh questions that came up during the the budget hearing, um we had some residential road resurfacing questions. So we put together, actually, um Veronica and her team and Mike put together a little slideshow to kind of give you an idea of how we orchestrate things and how things are progressing and why we are where we are today. And then also a little bit about where we hope to be in the very near future. So the next slide. So you can see, um we're trying to get to a resurfacing of a 20 to 25-year cycle on our county roads. And thanks to the board and the decision that you recently made for this budget year, um we're dealing with 13-plus million dollars for road resurfacing and hopefully increasing that uh in the years to come. Our road conditions are based on a 1 through 10 scale, 10 being the worst. Any road that is a 7 or higher is placed on a list for future road resurfacing. The current year's resurfacing list starts with the highest density roadway. That's the direction we got from the board in the past. And we're hoping with uh some new direction coming in the future, that may change. Next slide, please. Kind of give you an idea of the mountain we're climbing. We have 1,893 miles of roads in Citrus County. That's all roads. So it's really like comparing those roads if you were to drive, say, from Citrus County, La Canto, Florida, all the way to Yellowstone or even to um North Dakota, Grand Forks, North Dakota. And there's another uh reference there of a Florida to New Mexico. So just kind of give you an idea of how many roads or how much roads we're dealing with uh for maintenance in Citrus County. Next slide, please. So we have a new bid that's, we're currently working off that has lots of techniques when it comes to road resurfacing. But for the most part, these are the three we are using until we get caught up. The first is milling and resurfacing in the road. That's where we take the top layer off and we put new asphalt down. We have an open grade technique that we utilize where we have soil cement-based roads that we cannot mill, which are out in Citrus Springs as well as um other areas of the county. Then we have full-depth reclamation where we go in, they grind up everything that's there. They add different things to that mix. They repack that and we um put asphalt down over that. And these um numbers that you see here just give you an idea of how much it costs per mile for each of these three techniques. Next slide, please. So right now, on full-depth reclamation, we are budgeted for 3,638,379.2. That's been awarded to um Superior Asphalt. We're waiting on their estimates and their scheduling for that work. And that is uh several roads in the county that we can identify for you. That's where they're going to start. Then we have open grade and milling of the of the resurfacing. That's just a little over 8.5 million. That's been awarded to Pave Right with the current contract that we have. The work order issued for District 3 uh is awaiting the final estimate and schedule and it should encumber approximately 2.5 million dollars of that amount. And then Citrus Springs MSBU, um they have decided to also add 850,000 dollars to road resurfacing within that MSBU of Citrus Springs. So this year, they've given 850,000 dollars and we're on track to do the same for next year. And that will also be awarded to Pave Right, who won that uh portion of the bid. They've been uh asked to give us a final estimate and schedule on that as well. Next slide. This is kind of a timeline of where we started and where we're at. Of course, October 1, the budget began, scope of services developed um the way we always did road ser- resurfacing bids, where we put together a huge list of roads and we go out. But uh there was new leadership in Public Works and we changed our methodology. We went to a different style bid. A bid that wasn't a one-off or a one-year bid. It is a multi-year bid. It's guaranteed for two years and then it can renew for additional three for us, a solid five-year uh road reconstruction bid. It gave us a lot of different techniques as well, not just the three that we spoke about, but it's a lot of techniques that we might use in the near future once we get caught up with the worst of the roads we have in the county. March 1, that new scope was developed. March 11, the procurement authorization was completed. March 26, the bidding documents were prepared. April 29, the bid period opened. May 29, it closed. June 11 was B O C C approval. In July 1, we began issuing the first task orders based off of that bid. Next slide. So this kind of breaks things down a little bit. District 3 resurfacing work order was issued to Pave Right July of 2024. It's pending their final estimate and their schedule. We hope to receive that in the next week. Remaining districts uh district uh that are left after 3 uh will be work orders in succession, one after the other. All work orders, we hope to be um to Pave Right for their um fees and their schedules by October 1. Next slide, please. So this is a little bit about the localized areas and repairs that we have. It was a total budget that was given to Public Works for 950,000 dollars. And these are some of the roads that we're starting with. Um Hall's River and Dunkland Street Notice to Proceed was issued to Pave Right July 29. Uh the most recent update I received was that they are actually starting on Dunkland today. They will be milling and paving tomorrow. Uh for Hall's River, uh there's messaging boards being put out in advance about the road resurfacing that's to begin August 12, Monday. Final completion for those would be August 29 this year. County Road 486, Citrus Hills, there in front of Publix where the road is starting to come up is another localized repair. Notice to proceed was given to Pave Right August 16 and we're expecting a final completion September 4. West Venable is another area, right? We're 19 in front of uh Home Depot there where there's a section of road that's really coming apart. Uh the work order was issued to Pave Right. We're waiting on their final estimate so we can put together that schedule as well. Next slide. So this is what we're really looking forward to. We have an RFQ that is out. Um it has been um recommended to a Mot McDonald to do an evaluation or an assessment of our roads, roadway pavement condition assessment. So we're waiting on their scope and fee. We should have it any day. As soon as that comes in, then we'll negotiate with them and we will uh bring it to the board for approval. Once we have that, it's going to take them seven to eight months to go around with their vehicle, just like you see here, and actually take an X-ray of every road we have in Citrus County. It's going to give us a condition, not of just the road, but of each segment of that road, which will allow us to go back out to bid next year if we wish or utilize the existing bid we have with a whole different plan. Instead of going on a 7 to 10 based on density, we can actually get real-time uh science on roads and which roads need to be done first and which ones would be most economical to do first. Hopefully, that will be a workshop that we have as soon as that assessment is completed. Next slide. So this is a little bit about what that does. Uh it detects the distresses and the uh cracks in the in the road. It 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 not only looks at the the road and the condition of the road, but it has the ability to also look at the um assets that the county has. We have lots of street signs that are out there. We also have drainage structures that this will be able to pick up if we so wish uh the the actual striping of the roads and the condition of that striping. And it can also go as far as to look at our bridges, as far as the guardrails and the condition of that surface over our bridge. It analyzes all types of uh cracking, rutting, traveling. Um it goes segment by segment, as I mentioned. It provides the comprehensive data that we need for inventory. Uh it also um will give us a spreadsheet. It'll tie right into our G S F, GIS maps and it'll have a GIS format. And hopefully, this system will be put into place as we move forward with any bids we go out to for road resurfacing. Next slide, please. So April 7 requested for, that was the RFQ that we went out for. May 9, uh the responses were due. June 7, we began to negotiate on the scope and fee.
Commissioner Schleba has a question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I think, I think you're answering it on this one, that when the board decided to go forward with this, was April?
Yes.
Okay, very good. And it's eight to nine months to get going, but to assess all the roads?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So on that, we're going to go to next steps. We're going to receive all the documentation from the vendor. Uh we're going to make bid recommendations based off of that, receive board approval and issue a purchase order. So hopefully, that will help us in the future as we move forward on our road resurfacing program. Next slide. And that is it. Any questions?
Commissioner Cannard?
Once, once this study of the roads is complete, we'll get a report back on the condition of each one of our roads. The how, how, what's the lifespan of of that report? How often does this need to be repeated? Is this going to be an annual thing before the next road resurfacing bid goes out? Or is it five years or, you know, is there a standard?
Yeah, average standard is three years. Um of course, we can decide what we want to do, whether we want to stick with that three years or we want to stretch that to five to analysis, you know, get analysis on the roads after that.
Okay, thank you.
Um Commissioner, Commissioner Bays, then Commissioner Schleba?
Hi, Mr. Hall. Uh I sent a couple emails um to Mr. Howard regarding some roads in Citrus Springs. And um I'm just curious. I was talking to um a gentleman who lived on his road. He purposely bought on that road because he was the only person. So he's lived there a long time, 30 years or so. And it is in terrible condition, but now eight homes have since, in the last few years, been built on that road. How often do we look at that? Because I've said it before, I understand why we have the system in place, but um a lot of the roads in District 3 really don't have a chance of getting paved because of density. And I just, you know, I understand, but it doesn't also seem fair. So I I was wondering, when, when do you um update those roads for density?
So currently, the county, the way we get the list together is we go out every two years and we evaluate the roads by in-house staff. That's why we're looking forward to this RFQ when it does go out um and is awarded. That they'll be evaluating. they'll be evaluating our roads for us. It won't be our staff looking at them, and it's not only going to give us a spreadsheet, it's going to give us a real-time living document that is electronic, that we can log into and see the condition of each road. And hopefully, if, if the system works where it's easy to access, we can give that information as well to, to everyone who wants to look at it and see where their road ranks. And it won't be ranking, hopefully, based on density at that time. It'll be ranked based on the information collected and the science behind what road needs to be done first and why.
Very good. It would be, it would be so helpful if some young computer engineer or any computer engineer could figure out a system where, as the permits are being pulled on different roads, that it was plugged in so that we don't have to wait every two years. Because even this, the request for qualification went out in April, but I think we started talking about it in January, and then we have another year. Now, you did say when, when you presented this, that it wouldn't be a fast process. But I guess my mood today is just, I'm tired of how slow government is, and I want to see, you know, some of these roads paved and, and make it a little fairer, but, you know, I'll get off my soapbox about that. But I, you're doing a good job.
Thank you.
I know I don't sound like it, but you are doing a good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, we didn't actually get funding till, I think it was actually April. So we went as fast as we could as soon as we got the funding. It's another one of those F bombs. And another thing, just since Commissioner Canard came back, but this really is going to position the county in a much better position than they've ever been in, because now you can make science, database decisions that you're not doing now. And that's why I asked him to come up with this graph, because how many miles of road you have is amazing. So I think there's an opportunity for cost effectiveness with this type of program. It's a leading program, so we're excited about it. But we got to start somewhere. Like I told staff, we can't stop progress until that's done. We're going to be in a much better position a year from now to be able to actually have real data that we can actually share with the public, that we can defend. And that's what concerns me now, is it's tough to defend some of these numbers because I've got to have data. And right now, we've got one person going out there that they can't do that. I mean, so now it's going to be amazing when they crisscross the county. We're going to do videos on this and things like that for the public, but it's going to be pretty impressive when we can actually put this up, you know, on the website and be able to show, these are the roads, why we're doing them, and justification for what we're doing. So, and again, it's science. Doesn't mean we can't have a human touch to it. So we got to be able to balance that out. But, I mean, Pasco just, that's what they're doing. The state's doing this. I mean, this is, this is what you do. This is to move the county in a proactive approach. This is the way to go. Thank the board for their, your leadership to, to fund this, because it's going to, it's going to bear great fruit in the future.
Commissioner Finnegan, did you already go once? Yeah, Commissioner Finnegan's next, and then you.
Hey, Carlton. Two things. First of all, thank you. I'm so glad that we're taking a look at this. It, you're saying it won't be based on density, but I think it bears repeating that two issues I have with that. And I see our friend from Pine Ridge here. When we go by just density, some people with larger lots, bigger homes, still paying high taxes, are getting overlooked because the street doesn't appear as dense, but it's covered by tax dollars, just as a, as a, a street that's more populated, more populated. The second thing is, to Commissioner Canard's point, the last meeting about the money being able to be spent, I feel like we had mentioned there was a bidding process, that we should fix that, because we're collecting the money, and it's important to get the roads done. And it sounds like, if I'm looking at this correctly, if it takes eight or nine months, we may not, from our October 1 budget coming up, we may not start paving till March of next year?
Well, we're in hopes that next year's budget that comes in for road resurfacing will either utilize the existing bid we have to go right out to work, or we can go to a new bid if that's what the administration desires, so that we could get off to the races as soon as we get the budget. The evaluation of these roads is going to take, like we said, eight to nine months. That would probably be information we collect this year for the following budget year, not next year's budget year, but the year after, to implement that data that we collect for that year.
So to my fellow commissioner's point, last meeting, we can, so the money that we have in the pot right now that's been waiting, it's under contract. We can expend all of that, and then as we get the new money come October 1, simultaneously, we'll be able to expend both of those pots of money in a timely manner and just get double those streets done. Yes, we've fixed whatever problem that was.
Whatever it takes, yes.
Whatever it takes. Actually, I had a very good conversation with Pave Right. I don't know if they were in the audience or not, but they assured me that their focus is solely Citrus County now. They're taking all of their resources and focusing on Citrus County. I let them know how important to get these roads done. Our, so obviously, we're going to monitor that closely. But yes, we want to see these roads resurface. We want to get these done simultaneously. We're not going to wait on the data to come back. We can't wait. So we got to do it simultaneously. But in the future, we'll have even better data, I think, in the future, but we're going to, our goal is to get, get this stuff going, and you're going to see, I think, boots on the ground, it sounds like, already starting, so.
It's a lot like what I said earlier. You can't, we can't stop doing business to wait for it to be perfected, but we need to get this going. But we will get more and more efficient with this data.
And I think our commitment, our commitment administration, obviously, is aligned with this board. Maybe every 90 days, we're coming back. We're going to have a conversation, just like we're having today, with where are we at? You know, so that's important to make sure that what gets measured gets done. So we're going to make sure this gets measured and it gets done.
Yes. Did you want to go?
Yes. Carl, I would like some sort of update on SCOP funding and collector road paving. I feel like we're just falling further and further behind, and I don't know. Where, I mean, where are we?
So we're getting less and less from the state every year on the SCOP funding. The county's input of that is, is, you know, a percentage. So the next project that we're going out for is Duncan Field. I think that the award went to Pave Right as well for that section of road. There's 700 some odd feet of that road that's going to be completely dug out, down seven feet, replaced, because it is no base there whatsoever. And then the entire road from end to end gets resurfaced. So that'll be the next SCOP project that we start, and hopefully, that's going to be in the next few months.
Do you know how much we collect in SCOP roughly?
I believe the number is 1.3 a year, 1.3 million.
And do you, do you know, in today's dollars, what it would take to do the roads that are in very, very poor condition, where, what the funding would look like?
No, I don't have that documentation with me, but I could provide it. We do have a SCOP schedule that shows all the roads that are on our schedule that are put out for the next five years. I can show you exactly which roads are scheduled through DOT to be done.
Some of these, I don't know if they're going to make it through that schedule. I mean, they're that bad. So what, do you have a recommendation to the board as to how to, you know, 1.3 million in SCOP funding is just not going to cut it? And most of these people have to drive on a collector road to get to their residential road, just like Pine Ridge Boulevard.
Yeah, I would have to, you know, really talk to Department of Transportation, because their funding is already set in place. If we mess with that schedule or that funding, it could be detrimental to the county.
Well, I'm not suggesting that. What I'm suggesting is what, what does the county need to do? 1.3 million isn't going to cut it, and we can't wait for SCOP funding every year to do these roads. Because I would, I would venture to guess, if you were going to go do a POPCA today, it's probably going to be 4 million. So you, I mean, 1.3 million on a POPCA is like filling a pothole.
Right. That's why it's probably broken up into sections. We can only do so much of the road.
And that's not efficient. That's not efficient for the, the person that's going to pave the road, and it's not efficient for us. So if we needed to figure out how we're going to fund these roads, what is it that we need to do? So when a POPCA comes along, and we said, okay, we're going to use our SCOP dollars to do X section, but we're going to do the rest of it. We need to figure out a funding mechanism to keep all of this on track, not just residential roads, but to, for these collector roads, whether it's Gospel Island, Halls River, Venable, wherever it's at. But I, I mean, I, I think we're putting blinders on and forgetting about some of these major roads that people have to traverse in order to get to their house. So I, I think we, that's another big look that we need to look at, because it's not just about residential road resurfacing. We have got, we've got to get the money into the program to do this all over our county.
I agree. Yeah, hopefully, we can put together, you know, the, the list of roads that we have currently, and then the ones that are not on the list yet, and the condition after we get this company on board and they actually assess those roads. Maybe we can put it into a budget process where we find the funding for that in future years.
But we can't wait two years to do this. I mean, this has got, I mean, we've got to start looking at it yesterday.
I agree. Not only that, but, you know, it's, SCOP funding is based on population. 200,000 is the maximum right now to receive SCOP funding, so we need to look at that because the county is growing.
Thank you.
To Commissioner Bays and, and my point of always looking, well, all of us do, decades out, that's exactly right. We need to have some sort of master plan to not only get ahead of it, but be ready for the partial funding that we get from SCOP is going to drop off entirely. So.
Agreed.
Any further board discussion?
Yeah, I do have one other thing. So. To that very point on this, but, you know, I'm going to keep saying it every meeting, every time we talk about it, we have got to start sequestering money away even for match dollars for, for expansion purposes. That comes at a price tag of 50% of whatever that's going to be from FDOT. And we're going to have lots of capacity issues coming up. And, you know, we're putting money away for road resurfacing, for residential. We just talked about collector roads, but we haven't even talked about expansion. And I, that, I'm, I'm just going to keep pounding it every meeting. We've got to start thinking about in the future. It's, you know, we're never going to stand under the shade of the, the tree that we plant today, but we better be thinking about the legacy that we're going to leave behind 50 years from now.
Commissioner Canard.
Do we have a firm commitment, a date of when the vendor is actually going to start putting asphalt down?
Tomorrow.
Oh, very good.
Are you serious?
Yeah, they're going to start, one of those localized repairs starts tomorrow.
Oh, that's awesome. That's the best answer I've heard all day. Only one better would have been a month ago or a year ago.
I was going to say, the commissioner's comment, actually, Eric just said, we are looking at impact. That was one of the board's directions. We were on task for that, which I think, again, that's another opportunity if we get the impact fees right. So that's coming too. But this group, if we're able to select them, they have a whole team of expertise that will look at exactly the issue you're talking about, that I think, and they're local, they're within the region. But that's an area that I'm very interested that you are too, that you've got a, delay is not an option. So we've got to look at all these things, and I'm excited about if we get that team in place, that team, I think, is going to be really helping us.
Commissioner Schlebo.
Well, since you brought that up, are we on target to have that discussion about transportation impact fees? And?
There's a, there's a process for that, when we are allowed to go out to bid and things, timelines, but yes, that's, that's on track. You'll be seeing that soon at some point.
Because I, I'm sure all of us do, have a lot of citizens that say, do we have a plan for all this growth? And I think that's one tool in the toolbox that we need to look at, especially with inflation and what's happening, and what, whatever, whatever we're legally allowed to do and when we're legally allowed to do it, I, I'd love to bring that forward.
Yeah, we're, we're doing that. I think I'm just looking at my notes here. The next step now is there, we're looking at a continuing services vendor as we speak now, but there's a process before we can actually do that. But, but we're on track for that, because we heard the board loud and clear. So it'll be a few months from now that you'll see that, but we're going to ensure that we meet those timelines on that as well. It's much needed to look, look at it, review that again.
Thank you.
To be specific, I believe the next time we're allowed to get a recommendation and raise impact fees is next summer, late spring.
I think we're at a point now, we can actually, we're going to have to just go back out.
I think we're less than a year out, but we have to get a new study done, which means we have to put out an RFP, which means we have, then they have to do the work.
You have to go through the whole process. Yeah, so we have a timeline, milestones. We don't want to miss that window, but staff's working on it.
Yeah, we just, we really need those updated numbers as to what it actually costs.
Yes.
The, the cost of impact.
Because they're a lot bigger around the region from what I've been looking at, so.
All right. Commissioner Schlebo.
And if it's possible, as we're doing this, could we, could you have, perhaps see fit to have your staff put something out there to explain what impact fees are? Because, you know, I just assume people understand it, but a lot of people don't understand what the impact fee is and who has charged the impact fee, and it might be an opportunity for education.
I think that'll be a whole segment. I agree. Same with stormwater. Both of those are, we've been, I've been talking with staff about those, but absolutely, those are great opportunities to, to discuss that with the public and better educate, because it's complex when you, until you actually understand what that's really for. Absolutely. Good points.
To those listening in the studio audience, it's new construction only. It's not if you already live in an existing home. Thank you, Mr. Hall. All right, open to the public. If you would like to address the board, you get three minutes. Unless you have a letter on file, please let us know if you do, and then you get five minutes. Please address all remarks to the chair. Also, please watch the timer. You will have a one-minute yellow light warning coming up before it goes red. Thank you. Hi. And I'm, you know, I've been really good about using last names all day, but yours just terrifies me, so I'm just going to say, hi, Mark.
Very good. Thank you very much, ma'am. Mike, yeah, five minutes for me. I'll, I'll be representing the 11,000 residents of Pine Ridge. My name's Mark Sevesky. I live on North Wagon Point in Pine Ridge. And it, I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you this morning, and I'm very encouraged by the dialogue that I'm hearing from the commissioners and with the staff about trying to get things moving, because that's the big thing from our perspective of what's missing from all this. But I do want to say thank you for the support that you're doing, the work that you're doing on the budget, the responsiveness from the staff. And I'm just going to do a couple callouts, Mr. Howard, Ms. Doran, and Mr. Hall. They've all been responsive to us, and so great transparency, great support, so hats off to them on what they do. I do want to say that we're very encouraged. At the preliminary budget hearing, I said I wanted to walk away with a good news story. And during the, the hearing, it was a little bit uncertain how I was going to bring that forward, but like I said, the discussions with you and, and with the staffs in particular, the, there is a potential good news story to be out there. I mean, you talk about it, about $13 million this year for residential roads, proposed $16 million next year. We have an idea what the inflation is and, and factors and all that stuff. So, so I think that's good news. But the elephant in the room for us in Pine Ridge is the lack of action. In the briefing we just had, Mr. Hall talked about the density rule. Our understanding was now the funds are prorated in percentage of roads per district chairman, right? Is that our district representative, right? Commissioner on that one. That was not included in the briefing, so I kind of keyed in on that one. And, and Commissioner Finnegan highlighted the fact, the impact that density has on Pine Ridge. Here we are at the very end of this fiscal year. $13 million has been allocated, and we haven't seen anything. And this will be the third fiscal year where Pine Ridge has had zero roads repaved. Part of that is, previously was the density rule on that one. Part of it is the, the mechanization of the contract vehicle that people are trying to put in place, and, and we understand all the science behind it. But by the county's own grading criteria, as a community, Pine Ridge has the worst roads in Citrus County. Three consecutive fiscal years without a single road repaved. The boot in the butt, foot on the accelerator, go faster and all that stuff, great words. What we need to see is that aligned with the actual action out there. And something we may need to look at is the relief for Pine Ridge, and how do we address the density rule for us? At the preliminary budget hearing a couple weeks ago, we asked for an updated list of when, or which roads in Pine Ridge would be repaved, and an idea of when they would be gotten after. The presentation that was given right here gave us a good idea for the whole county, but we would like something more specific to Pine Ridge. but we would like something more specific to Pine Ridge and a particular interest to us is Commissioner Schlebock has most of our roads in, in Pine Ridge, but the far western part belongs to, or is in Commissioner Kennard's district. So those would be the ones that we would be very, very interested in and how that would be out. And so that's a request I would levy towards the commissioners and I would appreciate to see any follow-up action on that. Once again, very encouraged by the words, let's get going to grab a term. So thank you very much and I'm glad pretty much everybody survived the storm. So blessings on that one.
Less talk, more action. I agree, by the way.
Janet Barick, Citrus Springs. My favorite topic, residential roads. All right, residential roads is what we were talking about and not just roads. Residential, okay. Falls River Road, Dunklin Road, 486, West Venable Street. Those aren't residential roads. They're closer to connector collector roads. Think about it. 486 is a highway. That's not a residential road. And yes, it does need some repaving, not just where he's talking at the hills, but if you go over by the west, or over a little further to the west and you get by Pine Ridge Boulevard, just before the Pine Ridge traffic lane, there's sections that that much of the surface tar is missing and you got big sections of it. Okay? So yeah, it does need to be serviced, but that's not residential. I thought we were going to talk about residential and I had suggestions for this lovely figuring out residential. When you're talking about Citrus Springs, you're talking about at least three houses per acre. That's density in Citrus Springs. When Pine Ridge is talking about density per acre is one house per acre. When you're talking about Sugar Mill Woods, your density is, I think it's two houses per acre, but it may be one. And when you talk about the new developments such as Twisted Oak or Twisted, whatever it is, the golf course, that's six and eight per acre. When you're talking about the crossings, you're talking about eight houses per acre. You can't consider the density of this to this to this is the same. They are all different. You have to look of usage. How many people are actually using it? Okay? And in Citrus Springs, we do have the worst roads. Pine Ridge has bad ones. But when it comes to the number of roads, we have five hundred or four hundred and twenty-eight miles of roads. That's one quarter of the roads. Pine Ridge has less roads than we do. And some of their roads are really nice and they've been paved recently. Okay? So, you know, it's nice that they're going to start paving. And I asked the gentleman and he said they're going to start with Dunklin. Dunklin is a connector collector road. I thought it was under SCOP money to do Dunklin. Maybe I'm wrong, but I thought we had a SCOP agreement for Dunklin. Okay? So when you're talking about SCOP, SCOP is very important to this county because it's a seventy-five, twenty-five. All right, you take the one point three million and add twenty-five percent on. That's how much we can get paved, which is a decent amount. We can get just under two million paved. But when I'm looking at what he's talking about, seven months from now before they can actually start doing any of the residential roads, that's what the people wanted, residential roads.
Good afternoon. Dr. Carmen Kubichak, Administ Village Four. I'm curious to know, and I think she kind of hit a little bit on it, out of the one thousand eight hundred and ninety-three miles in Citrus County, I would like to know for each district, what percentage of that amount is actually paved roads? Because my daughter and I have been driving through Citrus County and there's a lot of unpaid roads and in horrendous condition, there are some that have been paved. And my understanding is that the roads are not lasting to twenty and thirty years that he claims they should be lasting. So I want to know, is it the same contractor that you guys are using and the roads are not, you know, lasting that long? And if it is, then you're wasting our tax money. Commissioner Bays mentioned last time when I asked about the taxes and what goes in. I don't benefit from a lot of those things. She claims that if I drive on the roads, that yes, I do benefit. I rarely go to some of the districts, but yet I'm, I'm paying taxes for it. And our community is, I have to say, the worst that I've seen. Commissioner Davis mentioned at one point that a lot of those are private roads. Our subdivision, the roads are owned by the county. Okay? And I know it's a different mess, but nevertheless, you do own the roads. I would like to know the percentages where, who's benefiting from all these paved roads that you guys are going to be doing? Because certainly I'm not benefiting from it. So which district actually is the one that's going to come ahead with the road maintenance that you're proposing? You know, the residential roads. I, I want to know that and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at open to the public? Going once, going twice, we'll close open to the public. Mr. Howard, is the nineteen hundred miles county accepted maintained roads or does it include all roadways, including sand roads?
Um, I'd have to get, I think that's me. I want, I don't want to say that off the cuff. That, that number is all county roads.
Including the sand roads?
Correct.
Okay. And what, what percentage of those are accepted for county maintenance? Or what number is accepted for county maintenance?
I'd have to look at that, but that, that amount of roads is what the county currently maintains. In other words, if it was a private road or if it was a, a road that the county doesn't currently maintain, it is not on that list.
Okay, then that, that's the opposite of what I just thought you said then. Right. Okay. So that's nineteen hundred miles of county maintained roads.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
So the comment, if I can, the comment about residential roads and the Hancock's not a residential road. There was money put aside. It was in the slide. It is not part of the residential resurfacing program, but it is localized repairs that was put into the budget. And, and that's where they're actually beginning to put asphalt down tomorrow is on those localized repairs. Each one of the districts is split up. That was something that the board decided a year or so ago to allocate the funds for road resurfacing to each district based on the miles in those districts. I know District Three is the first one we've sent out and that is thirty-eight percent of the funds, thirty-eight percent of the roads in Citrus County. And each one of the districts are broken down that way.
Commissioner Bays.
Could you also tell us, what is our, as opposed to being on a twenty, twenty-five year cycle for repaving roads? What are we currently at?
I would say in the past, before this year's budget, we were probably on a fifty-year cycle or worse. But currently with the, the funding that was given this year that we have and possible funding for next year's budget, we, we are on that twenty-five year cycle.
Thank you.
I believe, and I have to go to Commissioner Kennard, but I believe when I joined the board, we were at eighty or ninety years is what I was told. But that's always a squishy number with inflation and changes and things. Commissioner Kennard.
Yeah.
And then Commissioner Schlebo.
A few minutes ago, I'd asked when, when we could expect asphalt to actually start going down on these roads. I guess, I guess I just wasn't very clear with that. I understand that the Dunklin repair is starting tomorrow. But what about the rest of our road resurfacing program, this thirteen million dollars? The money for Dunklin, and I believe Duncan Feld also was separate monies. But that thirteen million residential road resurfacing, when is that asphalt going to start going down?
So if I look back at my notes, the District Three work orders were issued to pave right in July of twenty twenty-four. They're out evaluating that thirty-eight percent of the roads as we speak. We're waiting on their final estimate for the roads selected to come to us in the next week. Once we receive that, we review it. Once we agree, we issue a work order and a PO and then they start scheduling the work. But it's still pending the schedule for District Three is the first district that we issued a work order on.
So we still don't, I mean, we're, we're months, not weeks, before we start the road resurfacing.
Correct.
August, so we'll be, we'll be into October into our next budget.
Why months?
Well, when we go back to the timeline that we had on the slide, we were ready to go out to bid for a list of roads like we have every year. But administration for Public Works decided we need to go in a different direction. We went to a bid that is not just a by-the-year bid. We went out to a bid that has lots of different techniques that we can utilize, including the three that we had in the slide. But it also, doing that, going out to bid for something that is a multi-year process, put us behind five to six months in our road resurfacing.
Is there a way to try to expedite this? I mean, we've been waiting years.
Yeah, we're having conversations about that. So we're going to continue to keep you briefed every board meeting. We have other options as well, but we'll give you the, an update the next board meeting. And we're continuing to do our best to expedite the process.
I think we tried to run before we walked on the paving and I, I totally applaud long ball efficient thinking. And I understand you were not at the head of Public Works when that decision was made. And so we're just going to move forward, but it would be nice to get a lot of asphalt laid.
Yes.
Quickly and then make it a lot better going forward. Commissioner Schlebo.
I just want to, I need you for a second, but I did want to make a statement. The first two years that I was in office and I would bring up the roads, I was told that District Three has the most paving being done. And that's all well and good, but then when you hear the Colonel ask and state that in three years, not one road has been paved in Pine Ridge. And I just want to, I, I want you to explain that to me because, you know, privately with discussions with staff, I know, you know, it's not my job to, to go out there and pave the road, but we push back and there's always an answer why things aren't happening. And I started today's meeting very crabby about how government works. And each agenda item we go through, I get crabber. So I'm trying not to look, I'll look at Mr. Howard and could you, can you explain this? Because I know it, it baffles me and we put, we have, thankfully, this board is being so aggressive about road resurfacing and I'm thankful for that. But if we're putting the money there and nothing's happening, it is very frustrating. So if you could tell me about Pine Ridge and also I would like to know, just because I'm competitive, Pine Ridge or Citrus Springs, who has the worst roads? I think they both have terrible roads. So I, I don't, I, I don't know that one is worse than the other, but if you guys can give me the data, that'd be great.
We'll, we'll do that. So. We'll provide, I don't have the data in front of me, but I think some of those roads are actually in this work authorization. I would, I'm pretty confident that Pine Ridge is, as well. And it comes back to the, the same thing we spoke about before. The direction that we received in the past was based on density. So when we're going from a seven to a ten and you have a, a road that is ranked a ten, it is the, the worst road in the county, but it only has eight homes on it versus a road that is ranked seven, which is in okay shape, needs attention, and has a hundred homes on it. Of course, it's going to be done first and that's what we've seen in past years. Hopefully with this new RFQ that we're going out to with McDonald's to evaluate these roads based on science, we can get rid of that density and really go to, go to work on the roads that need to be done first based on the condition of the roads and not density.
Go ahead.
Yes, okay. But I also brought up last year or maybe the year before or both years that there are roads in Pine Ridge that are at buildout, completely built out. But because they're at bigger acreage and they're, those roads are terrible, they'll never have an opportunity with this formula to get the roads paved. So it is very frustrating. It's frustrating for me. So I can imagine the people that live on these roads. So we have to do better. And I, and I know we're trying to do better, but you know, how, how much can we keep getting told as commissioners that we're not getting the job done?
Commissioner Schlebo, I actually have a, an idea to throw out.
Oh.
So to her point, if it's a hundred percent built out, I mean, have we looked, I mean, I, I was part of that conversation when we redid all of this. Have we looked at percent, bless you, percentage of buildout on lots? Not, not looking at taxes, not looking at anything like that. But if you, if there are ten lots on the road and it has nine houses on it, that's a ninety, not, not a per linear foot of road, but.
That would be a change to the process we're currently using.
Or at least put, or at least give that some weight, if not a hundred percent weight. That might be something to look at.
Yeah, based on board's direction, we can go in any direction. But right now, we're basing it on homes on every one hundred foot of road. So that's how we get the density calculation.
I think it is too, because this, this county is, has a lot. I mean, especially the older neighborhoods have a lot of one and up acre tracks. And it is, it's just not okay because if you, if you're buying on that road, it's because you want the bigger lot. You're paying for the bigger lot and that shouldn't hurt you on the backside that you never get your road paved. Now, obviously, we're fully funding now, but it'll take longer to catch up. But our formula is, is making sure that we prioritize the ones that are higher density per linear foot. So.
If you would like to give direction, we'll, we'll base the road resurfacing list on whatever you, you know, wish.
I'd like to, I personally would like an analysis done of it. It, you know, law of unintended consequences. Maybe it needs to be half of one, half of the other or whatever, but do an analysis of it and figure it out. That's what I would like. Any other commissioners want to weigh in? Commissioner Finnegan?
I'll go for that. When I ran for office, that's what I said the whole time. When I became a commissioner, I said that the whole time, especially after talking to the folks of Pine Ridge. I don't care if it's ten acres. If there's a house on it and they fully occupy that, that should be considered part of the occupied road. So of course I've been saying this for three years. I'd be happy for us to take a look at that.
I concur. I, I, I got to tell you that personally as a commissioner, I don't want to ever hear another person walk up to me and say, I don't know why you paved that road over there because there was absolutely nothing wrong with it. When we've got roads falling apart, it's ridiculous. And I mean, there needs to be a little bit of common sense put into this and let's just go find the roads that need to be paved, that people are living on and paying taxes on, and let's get to it.
Commissioner Schlebo.
I agree and hallelujah for this board. Let's move forward.
Go lay some asphalt.
Commissioner Kennard?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
I mean, the, the two law of unintended consequences there is number one, we can't just use common sense because then politics come into play and favoritism with commissioners and people that they know. So you can't do that. It has to be objective, not subjective. And secondly, I do recall when we discussed this before that there are some roads that have literally one lot or three lots on them and they're a billion miles long because they're farmland and law and unintended consequences. You know, we're trying to, we're trying to help out two neighborhoods that were built with substandard roads and have not been kept up. So there's a lot of other folks in the county that would benefit from that as well, whether maybe they should or not, should or should not be prioritized higher. So analysis. I think we beat that to death. Thank you, Mr. Hall. All right, lightning round. No? Yeah, I did because we answered, I did close open to the public. It was just a very long answer to two speakers. Three speakers, excuse me, three speakers. I already closed open to the public. We already finished answering. Remember, we only answer people after it's all closed. Got it? You wait till you're in this chair, missy. All right, lightning round.
Motion to approve E one A through E one I.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Schlebo. Is there any public comment on E one? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E two.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment on E two? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E three.
Do we need coffee? Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E four.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment on E four? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E five.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment on D five, or E five, excuse me?
E five?
Janet Barick, Citrus Springs. E five is the bylaws. I had a question. This is.
Pull your mic down, please.
Okay, I had a question. This is the Aviation Advisory Board, which is a non-paid board. Okay? And when I go through this, they're gonna have a paid secretary from the county who takes records?
They've always had one.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure, because I know the MSBU in Citrus Springs has a secretary from the county and they pay for it, but it's in our MSBU.
Yeah, it's just a few hours, it's part of the normal.
But the advisory board is just a regular advisory board and advisory boards have secretaries that are paid for by the county.
Yes.
In all of the boards that we have.
Yes.
That was a question I had, thank you.
Any other? We are, we already did that. Anyone else want to speak on this? Any board comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chair?
Uh huh.
What do you think about moving E11 up to get that handled while we have folks in the Sheriff's Office here?
Absolutely.
One of us is a little faster than the other one.
Make a motion to approve item E11A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment on E11A and B? Seeing none, any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, sorry.
That was an aye, yes, ma'am. Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for the interjection, Commissioner Kennard.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate the extra eyeballs on the audience. All right, E6.
Motion to approve E6A and B.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Baze. Is there any public comment on E6? Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E7A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Baze, second by Commissioner Schleba. Is there any public comment on E7? Is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E8.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schleba, second by Commissioner Baze. Is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion?
I just want to mention something.
Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Finnegan.
Thank you. I just was asking the question about the plat, I couldn't really make out on the backup, because before it looked around to eight, so this looks about four acres. And maybe it's in the best interest to plat the four.
Time's up.
You did that to yourself.
But I think since there is that extra property, just voting yes to this does not cost us any money. So, I want to move forward with that, but I just, I don't know if 20 years from now, if the county's gonna need property. So, I'm just throwing that out there, I don't really have an opinion about that, because we're not moving forward, but just something I felt like I wanted to mention. Thank you.
Mr. Howard?
I mean, I can obviously have more opportunities to look at this in the future. We have to do more analysis on it for you, if that's what you want. But we just brought this forward for your consideration.
I mean, before we start thinking about selling it, we should do our due diligence.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other board discussion? Commissioner Schleba?
Could Commissioner Finnegan say it again, what she's looking at for this?
This costs us nothing, so I'm wanting, I'm fine with moving forward with the plat, but it looks like they're plating about four acreage separate. I mean, before we were talking about putting a building on the same, there's like eight acres available. And I know the county, if we have property, it seems like we just have tiny little bits. This seems like a decent amount. And I'm just not sure that a different board 20, 25, 30 years ago wouldn't need some acreage to put something there, just like the animal shelter. It needed to be moved, but then it's scrambling, well, where are we? You know, there's no thought of having property in the future. So, I'm not rendering really opinion about what to do with that at this time, just something that I've thought about and just kind of throwing it out there.
Very good, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E9A and B. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Schleba. Is there any public comment on E9? Seeing none, any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E10.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Baze, second by Commissioner Schleba. Is there any public comment? Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E12.
Second.
Sorry about that.
Motion by Commissioner Baze, second by Commissioner Schleba. Is there any public comment on E12?
Sorry Janet, I didn't have my mic on.
Is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, team, that was fairly quick. Outstanding commission items.
Everything, everything we have has been updated, but what I will do is make a point. Every board meeting, we're gonna update you on these roads. We'll make sure that we get that in real time for you, each board meeting, we'll ensure that happens.
And rolling right into you, do you have, I think there's something you wanted to talk about?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for all the efforts over the last several days. A lot of, a lot of sleep was lost countywide. So, everybody did an amazing job, all the agencies, working with the Sheriff's Office with, as our partner, with emergency management, the cities, Health Department, National Guard, everybody came together as a team. And I want to appreciate all the hard work. We didn't finish till late last night. So, I just want to thank everybody for their selflessness, for all the stuff that they're doing. We stood up, I think, for the first time in the history, four locations for sandbag sites. So, again, some of our employees had to put, you know, they could go to their families, but instead, they actually were doing that on Saturdays for the public and stuff like that. So, I thank them for the team that we have in place and all the good work that they're doing, including the county attorney, she had to run around and get signatures and do those kind of things for us. So, again, it's a team effort to do that, so I'm very proud of all the efforts that have taken place across the last couple of days.
I am as well, that was my first time being chair during an emergency. So, emergency management met multiple, multiple times, starting on Friday. And it was an outstanding team effort, so. And we were absolutely blessed and my heart goes out to the folks up north, getting hit twice hard in your part.
I had one more thing if I could add.
Yes, sir.
Actually, on the way here today, I got a phone call from the National Association of Counties and that although this won't be released till next week, the information, but we won't be here until September. But we actually won the Excellence in Strategic Planning Award. The significance of that, we're the only county in the state of Florida that won that award. It's an inaugural program for the National Association of Counties. There was only three counties in the whole United States that won that. So, again, proud of all the things that we're doing countywide. It's important to plan, but it's important to execute. So, thank you very much for that. And I want to thank the staff and all the hard work they're doing, you all are doing it. So, but there'll be a certificate, they've also, they're gonna put us in the, the planning magazine that they're doing, National Association of Counties. So, I'm kind of just reading off of this, but it's a big deal to be the first county in the state of Florida to ever win this award through NACO, which is a big deal. So, I want to applaud staff, applaud the board, as well as our citizens and give everybody else a good hand clap, too. That's all I have, thank you.
That was my baby. And I will say that I am so grateful to all the folks that stepped up to help us with this. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, those of you who've heard the story, I apologize, that when the folks from FSU who are facilitating this, one of them was leading a facilitation with citizens and one of them was talking to me and he goes, you know, in all the governmental strategic plans we've done, this is the first one that was citizen-led. And I looked at him, I go, what? Like, who doesn't? And he goes, the five commissioners do a retreat where the public can listen, but they can't participate. And they come up with a strategic plan. I said, you gotta be kidding me. We could have the five biggest hearts and brains in the county up here, but we're still only five people. Not 172,000 people. And so, I worked with staff to tap the former Vision 2020 group and 2030 group, made up of a ton of volunteers, really true, true leaders in the community that have worked tirelessly for the betterment of this community, long before I came back home to live here and eventually run for office. And so, massive shout out to the 40 that were at the cannery and a massive shout out to all the citizens that wrote in, voted online, came to town halls to, to tell us how you want this county to maintain its small-town charm, maintain the nature coast, but also provide a thriving community for health and for economic prosperity, where nature and community thrive. I'm so excited and I've only played a small role in it, I was just the yappy terrier. Thank you, Steve.
If I could just read one, I just want to read, this is important. So, the sentence that they gave us, "This designation with this award also places Citrus County among the very top percentile of your county government peers across the nation as thought leaders in strategic planning, collaboration, and inclusive governance." I think that's kind of nicely said with what you just said, but that's coming directly from NACO.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. Excellent news, thank you again to everyone that participated in that. Anything else, Mr. Howard? Okay, committee reports, Commissioner Kennard?
Nothing.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Nothing.
I have a lot coming up, but nothing since the last meeting. Commissioner Baze?
Just an update, we did have the MPO board this past Thursday implemented the 2050 long-range plan. My biggest concern, and I expressed it there, is that the Florida Department of Transportation is looking at a 2055 plan. And I think sometimes there are some extenuating circumstances beyond our county that have implications to what we do in a long-range transportation plan. And considering all the growth that's going on that surrounds us, I felt it could be a little short-sighted, but regardless, where we're at, it's, they're looking at 2050, 2050 in our local MPO. And, but I never want us to lose sight of, of where we fit in with our state and the 2055 plan and what's happening around us, so. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Baze, Commissioner Schleba?
Yes, we had the MPO board meeting and Commissioner Baze just covered that. I did have a meeting July 25th with staff and different citizens and builders throughout the county. We have a situation now that we're dealing with, with barn dominiums and what's considered residential appearances, elevations. There has been a past practice of using the elevated maps to scale to figure out where your foundation goes from the highest point of the road, which, okay, that's great, but we have some bad actors that are coming in here. And we came up, actually, it was one of the engineers came up with an idea that when they submit the permit, that they need to also submit a site plan survey, more, more details with the elevations, because we're finding that roads, houses are being built and then there'll be like a ditch effort and the wa, the next house is up here, but they're on the same road and it's just flooding into people's homes. So, I thought that was a great meeting, we had a lot of compromise. Eric Landon handled it, he stepped in for Mr. Howard and Maricel was also in there. And it really was beneficial to the community and to the builders. And what is our plan for growth and how do we address and that makes sure that contractors are coming in here, they're bringing their subcontractors, they're not necessarily following the rules. And the inspections are going through, because they're following the building laws for the state of Florida, but it also, at the end of it, there are some problems. And so, I think to help Sam, give Sam, our building license holder, a little more tools so that he can get in front of these problems, I really enjoyed that. And that the contracts for new permitting system are under review with legal and OMB and that they're anticipating September for the BOCC to approve it. And because the permit process with the last one was been so difficult. And I just commend the staff for getting in that room, speaking to the community leaders and builders and finding solutions. And it was, I really enjoyed it. There are a little, some little tweaks about different words that legal throws in there, but we'll, we'll address that later. You know, can and cannot, believe it or not, we had a long conversation on can and cannot. So, we're, I'll bring that back later at a later date. But I wanted to thank Mr. Howard, Maricel, Eric, and the staff.
And we're done with committee reports, did you have anything else? Okay, Commissioner Kennard?
Nothing.
Commissioner Schleba?
I'm sorry, we went during, what do you call it, the lightning round? And I just wanted to bring something up for this board to think about. E2, our budget transfers. If you look at E2, there is $9,000 for training for building inspections, which they really need. I am finding that as I'm going through FAC and NACO, the education side of it is kind of expensive. And I've been paying for that, a lot of it, I think most of us have been paying, going over budget and paying for that ourselves. And this year, I'm anticipating having to write a check for that money. And I just think the education part of it needs to be looked at at some point before September 24th. That would just be, you know, something I would like to see.
Thank you. Well, you know, I'm a big believer in it, so. Commissioner Kennard?
No, I have nothing.
Okay. Commissioner Finnegan?
Thank you. So, I was talking with Madam Attorney about our medians and really our, our streets and highways. And this stems from, we've been talking a lot about growth. Probably the number one thing I hear is, especially in my district, we have to look out for homo sassa, things are growing, it's not looking the way we want it to look, this should be the nature coast, which I'm looking ahead at Commissioner Baze and she's probably gonna address, because of growth, the same things, things that are good and not good for our situation. So, we were having ongoing conversations and then when I was driving through town, hearing all this from the community, I literally see people on the side of the road, they are not from Citrus County, they come from time to time, they carry buckets. And something about saving children, I think a year or so ago, not the last time they were here, but a few times back, I had said, what, what are you actually doing? How are you helping Citrus County? Oh, we're, we're just saving children, but we're not from here. We're from Orlando. And, you know, these are our citizens giving money to not our citizens and I don't know if they're saving children or, I didn't actually get what that meant. But literally walking, you know, from car to car, walking in the streets, we'll cross the traffic, you know, the lights turn green, completely dangerous situation. Of course, as we're growing, you've all been to other cities, Tampa, even Ocala, you know, people would be sitting in medians with, with signs and everyone seemed to have their own corner. Ocala has an ordinance now and so does Gainesville and so does Alachua and some other places that Madam Attorney had looked at. But we thought it prudent, because I'm just one commissioner, I can't tell our attorney, start working on something in ordinance, just to bring this up with all of you. I don't know if your districts or people are getting in your ear about the same things, but I would like our attorney to look at this as we're growing for future, to stop some of the things that we don't want to see on our streets, to make our sidewalks good for walking and our crosswalks good for crossing and our streets safe for safety and traffic. And this would just be the first step. I think it's, we're, you know, just in the very initial stages, so it's not all worked out what exactly we would want it to say, but that's the scope of what we're looking at. The second point of this being, besides your, your vote to move this ahead, is clearly for your input also. You may be seeing something or your district people may be telling you something and you say, hey, while you're addressing that, here's something I've got going on. So, we can give all of our, our information to the attorney and see what she could come up for us. Thank you. And that's it, so.
Do you want to?
If the board wants to discuss, but I would like, I don't know, yes, I guess we need a motion. And I would be happy to make that motion first, so we can discuss. I would make a motion for this board to allow Madam Attorney to start looking into the safe use of a median's ordinance, which may encompass some other things as this board decides.
I'll second that motion for discussion.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan. Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Schleball. Commissioner Cannard.
Yep. My, I'm not opposed to this. My concern is enforcement. You know, are deputies from the Sheriff's Department, if somebody's violating this, are they going to stop and ticket somebody for being in the median? Or are they going to arrest them? Or I just, I have a hard time envisioning that happening. And I don't know that it's appropriate for us to implement new ordinances that we know there's no backbone behind them or expect very little enforcement behind it. So that's my only hesitation right now to this.
I agree. And I do, I wasn't sure when I read this agenda item, what you were going for. And I hadn't, I haven't seen the outside bucket people, but I do know what you're talking about. I thought you were talking about the people in the mediums with the signs, which, you know, we can't stop freedom of speech, even though we know what they're doing there. My concern is enforcement. The noise ordinance on the Homo Sassa River, right there for your house. We worked on that for a year to make sure it was enforceable. And, you know, we're at a time right now with the sheriff's budget request. And when we did get that noise ordinance passed, quiet zone, the first thing that was asked was for deputies for the water. And I'm a little apprehensive about the timing of this right now, but I think that if this board decides this is something they want to go through, I think it, I would support if it's enforceable, absolutely. And I just know that you can't pick and choose who, say, they don't do it anymore. But I did talk to Chief Stevens about when the firefighters go out there with the boots and do that. Once we put this in place, those things have to stop. Now, they probably already have stopped, so that might be something that, you know, we'll find out through the course of, you know, moving this forward or doing what. But I think there needs to be a lot of discussion. I think there needs to be a public awareness because a lot of times this can be looked at as you're stopping somebody's freedom of speech. Enforcement, how, you know, will the sheriff office want more money? There's also, the ugly side of it is, there's an argument that you're, you know, you're criminalizing poverty and we don't want that to come out. So if this does move forward, I would really ask the county attorney to address that because that's going to be a hard thing to address, you know? The freedom of speech and poverty and, you know, there's, should we be looking at other areas? But to help the people that are having to ask for money on these mediums, you know, is there collaboration with social services? I mean, where do you start? So I, I'm, I think this is a good step. I just really want to address those issues, so. If the board has anything else.
Well, the one thing that I heard that I have a little frustration with is people that come in our county and are raising money, that they're not raising money for anything to do with Citrus County. They're here raising money. In fact, there's an organization that, I believe it's at Walmart. And they go there and they are trained to say all the right things. It's a southeast organization across the United States. And they tell you that they're raising money for things here in your county. And the fact of the matter is, is that they're taking the money and they're sending it someplace else. And they are particularly preying upon the people that are homeless. And they move those people about every two to three weeks. And so from that standpoint, I have a problem with people coming to our county, raising money and using it for their benefit because I think they're enriching themselves and preying on people's charitable ability. So I do have a problem with that. I think there are ways. I've seen it done in other counties. I think you, and I don't know, if you're raising money, do you have to register with a county? Or can you have an ordinance where they have to register? I don't know. But I do have a concern with that.
Madam Attorney, did you have any comment on that now?
I think Commissioner Finnegan's idea is to look at roadway use and median use. We kind of got, the discussion kind of broadened to like, you know, what happens at the Walmart, which is private property. So that wouldn't have anything to do with what Commissioner Finnegan envisioned, which was the medians and the safe, the interactions between peoples, people and cars, that the dangerous situation that's created, not necessarily the message that's being portrayed.
Commissioner Bays did go afield, but I consider that an outstanding public service announcement for people to not get preyed on by folks at Walmart. So, because I'm not even sure a lot of the stuff goes to charity. It might be going, it's an elevated form of panhandling, possibly. So in terms of this particular ordinance idea, I am not opposed to it. But I, and I thank you for bringing it forward. I think that as a priority right now, with the county still being dramatically understaffed from where we were 15 years ago, something like that, 12 years ago, and the Sheriff's Department also being understaffed, I think it's not the right time. But I would encourage you to look into it some more and bring it back once we kind of get a little bit caught up on this crazy mad rush we're in to try to catch up on a lot of stuff around the county. That's my personal opinion. So, but thank you.
You're welcome. May I know?
Absolutely.
Okay, so answer a few of these questions. Commissioner Bays, we actually talked about what you're talking about. And if, and that's why I wanted to have this open discussion because if we can add something in, because, you know, we had talked about, and I had said, "Well, they can't do it on private property, but then the parking lots are deemed public." So I'm with you. We have to start, stop preying on our citizens. I don't agree with my fellow commissioners, although I respect what you're saying about, if there's not enough deputies, we shouldn't, we shouldn't create things if we don't think it can be enforced because of lack of law enforcement getting there. We don't say, "Well, it's going to be hard for them to get certain parts of the county, so we shouldn't regulate speed there," or, we should do what's right because when we're talking about major intersections where this would occur, they'll be passing by. Of course, no one's going to sit there. And I don't know that it raises to the elevation of calling 911 and pulling them off of calls. But it's the, if it's the right thing to do for the growth of our community as we grow, we're already prepared for some of that. And Madam Attorney and I also talked about freedom of speech. So you're not stopping the freedom of speech with a sign, but you are stopping the action that goes with it. So if you're trying to, let's say you're holding a sign and trying to get money or passing drugs or whatever, that eliminates that. So I suppose your sign can say something, but you can't interact and trade things with vehicles while the vehicles are in traffic. So I guess to your point, if they were holding a sign and someone to pull off into a, you know, a space. But it's the stopping the interaction. So I realize everyone's busy. This wasn't coming up with the solution. This was as time allowed, not elevating it to the attorney's priority thing, but as time allows to work on this issue. Maybe incorporate Commissioner Bays' thoughts in with that if we could. I'm not sure if we could, but, so that's where my motion is, just to allow this to be worked on as time permits.
Would you like to go forward with a vote or withdraw? It's up to you.
Well, withdrawing.
Because we have an active motion, so.
Right, withdrawing doesn't serve the purpose. This isn't voting on implementing a certain motion. This is just voting on her to, us to keep looking into it and working on it as time allows. So yeah, my motion stands.
Commissioner, Madam Chairman, two things, if I may.
Yes.
And I, I don't know if Commissioner Cannard was ahead of me. His light was on.
I'm fine.
Okay. Two things. The parking lots are private property. We can't control what happens there and I do think that is dangerous. The second thing, the act of passing drugs is illegal. That's completely different from what you're proposing. So I would, I would not agree with that part. I wanted to hear what this was about. I think that, I think I'm going to withdraw my second and because I wanted to have this discussion to see, but I don't think we're there yet for this, this ordinance, because it has to be enforceable. So I'm going to withdraw my second.
I'm, I just, I don't, did I just jump you?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, at this point, you don't have a motion on the floor.
Would someone like to?
You have a motion. I will second the motion.
Okay.
What I was, what I was going to tell you is that just asking the attorney to move forward with starting the work on an ordinance and then bringing that back to us, then we can look at maybe putting something in there that, that would allow an individual or an organization or something like that, you know, to register for a limited period of time. You know, the, all of that type of stuff are things that we can have input in along the way. But just if I'm understanding this correctly, this is just to give the attorney direction to start the process. We're not, you know, if she comes back with something that we don't like, we can always vote it down. It's a great work, wasted time, but we don't like it. We don't like the end product. So I'll support it. You won my vote.
Well, and you actually nailed it. That's why I didn't have, you said you withdrew your motion because it's not enforceable. We don't have anything to enforce. So I didn't come up here saying, "I want a motion specifically for this." I wanted feedback, which Commissioner Bays gave some feedback. So you said, you gave feedback. Well, maybe, do they have to register? So we're talking, I want her to move forward with taking all this into consideration and going, "This isn't going to work. This part could work, this part," and bringing something back. I'm not asking for any specific motion. Nothing's enforceable right now because we have nothing. Obviously, she's not going to bring back something that wouldn't be enforceable. We know you better than that.
I think it was watchdog.
I think watchdog was the word.
I think that we all understand that there's not an ordinance in play. It was just a discussion to direct the attorney to do that. My major concern is simply I do not want to overload staff. If you make that a criteria, that it is when she can fit it into her schedule and the staff because we just have so many contracts and things that need to be reviewed and pushed out right now, I do really like the idea, Commissioner Finnegan, I do. It's just a priority aspect. Commissioner Schleball.
Thank you. I was going to say that because that's why I said when I first started, is the timing of this during budget and all that's going on. I do think that you have touched on something that needs to be addressed, but I am concerned about staff. I also am concerned about, has any of these cases ever been tested or enforced? You said there was one in Marion County and somewhere else?
There's, many jurisdictions in Florida have enacted versions of the pedestrian safety issue. But as far as that issue, it has not been tested yet in the courts. The prior way of handling these types of issues was shot down by the courts. And so that's why jurisdictions have gone in a different manner. The safety issue, the interaction with traffic in the travel lanes and so forth. Those particular ones haven't been tested yet. But many jurisdictions have them.
Okay. You think more than 10 jurisdictions have them in the state of Florida? I didn't find many. I did look.
I don't know about 10. I know I've looked at, if I can have a second.
I know Hillsboro has one.
Six. I've looked at six that I can, that I can say, but I don't know about 10.
I just, okay, I think, okay, but how are you going to get it, which, how are you going to get it to be enforced? Because couldn't somebody just say, "Oh, I was crossing the road"? You know, if they, if it's called. I mean, I, I don't know how you're going to do it. If you can do it, more power to you, but I don't know how you're going to be able to get it enforceable. But if you, if you, if this board thinks that we should move forward on it, I don't think it's the right time. But I think you're pretty busy and we proved that with what we've got going forward, but it's at the discretion of the board.
Commissioner Bays? Anybody else?
As far as enforceability, what I anticipated doing is giving the board options on the manner of enforceability, whether it be like a citation or a, like, a ticket citation. Different jurisdictions have handled it differently and I figured I would give you the options and you all could decide which of the options that you wanted to put in place for Citrus County. And then it would be up to law enforcement to go from there.
Okay. I'm going to open it to the public. Would anyone like to speak on this matter?
Janet Barrick, Citrus Springs. As the county is growing and our commercial is growing and businesses are taking hold, we need to do something because as you pull out of Walmart parking on 486 and you go to turn onto 491, a lot of people stand in that median. And they could get hurt. And I mean hurt. They're not just standing there for standing there. I mean, they're bugging you. You know, they want money, they want this, they want that. If they are a legitimate organization, they have to register with the store to be out front. So if you go to Publix, they only allow nonprofits and they have to register and they have to check in with the store in the morning and they check out with the store later in the day. We do need to do something now because now is when the houses are coming. You've got 1,500 going to come on 1, on 44. You've got another thousand going to come on 491. You've got another thousand coming, another section 491, another 1,500 a little further down. I mean, if we don't start doing it now, prior to all of these houses being built, and yes, I know, they're not going to be built in a day. It's going to take between 10 and 20 years for them to build out because that's what you're giving them.
Madam Chairman, point order. Is this about the medium or the?
But, but the thing is, you need to have something. And I think it's a good idea to have the attorney look into what other places have gotten in ordinances that they have in place, okay, and see what is out there. Because our people, you know, we need to be safe for our residents and safe for the drivers and safe for the pedestrians. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Going once, going twice. All right, we'll close. Open to the public. Have you thought about what I said? About prioritizing it with her to just, if we, if I vote in favor of it, I don't want it to push anything serious on her schedule.
Oh, I'm not hounding her about it. We've actually talked about this on and off very briefly for months and months and months. So it's been us just gathering information. So now it's like, well, if we're going to make this a serious topic, again, it may take another month or months because we are going through budget and different things. This isn't something we're hounding our attorney about. This is just something we're putting on the radar.
Madam Attorney, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, ma'am. I serve at your pleasure, so.
Okay, but I'd be just hearing that priorities matter a lot with everything that we have on our plate right now.
Yes, ma'am.
So, okay. Yes, ma'am.
With that being said, and that point, I will support this, but it better be enforceable.
With that being said, and that point, I will support this, um, but it better be enforceable.
No more delays on road anything, road repaving anything.
I don't really have much to do with roads.
I know, I know, but it, it does cross your desk at some point.
Yeah, it does, it does.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
It's only a little painful. All right, where the heck are we?
N, N one.
That would be Commissioner Baze.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, I can see that we have several people from Floral City in the off, in the audience. Um, this was brought to my attention, uh, by many of the residents out there. Uh, Orange Avenue, um, is what we consider to be, uh, a historic overlay district. It all, it also has, I believe, a scenic byway to it. This, um, this request does include two, um, FDOT districts, one being our seven and the other one being District Five. This has to do with coming in from S- uh, Sumter County, from seventy-five, crossing over that bridge, and coming in. What's happening is we have a lot of truck traffic, heavy truck traffic, uh, exiting seventy-five, coming down Orange Avenue and getting onto Highway forty-one. And, uh, many of the people out there have what I call the, I think it's called the door, doorbell cameras or something, where they have cameras and they can actually video the heavy truck traffic going up and down the road. So, um, I did reach out to, uh, District Seven, and, uh, the state is willing to pay for this study, so it's not costing us anything, but we do have to pass this on our board, and then it has to go to the MPO board, um, to be accepted as well. So, that's in a nutshell what this is all about.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
I will make a motion for N one, A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Baze, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment on this matter? Welcome, just state your name for the record, and you get three minutes.
Okay, Laura Hennings. I'm a resident of Floral City, I'm also a proud member of the Floral City Heritage Council, and I'm also a store owner. And where my store is, is on the corner of Orange Avenue, which is forty-eight and forty-one. I've had trucks come down that road and take my Spectrum power pole or the, the cords. They have never made the turn without breaking down the electronic push-button crossing sign as well. Before, there used to be a building on the corner that I now own, and that was destroyed by a semi-trailer with, uh, boat trailers. Took it all off, it was condemned, it had to be removed, and now I own that corner as well. But, the noise level is unbelievable, the vibration, we're worried about the trees, you know, this, one thing I love about Floral City, it's always been a nice, quiet little village with beautiful oak trees, and now we've become a truck route. I have been sitting in my shop on a Saturday and counted ten semis. It could be Walmart, Publix, gas tankers, and I've been taking pictures and sending them to Sandy Cross, because it's just unbelievable. So, it's four times now I've had to call somebody to come out and put the electronic sign up to cross this thing. It's just, it's just not fun anymore, you know, it's just not right. So, I'm not gonna ding, but that's it.
Thank you.
Being a store owner, it really affects a lot of things.
Thank you.
Hi, Sandy Cross. I happen to live on that road. Uh, I can tell you from experience that we are having four to five heavy loaded dump trucks go by every day, which rattles my windows and hurts my foundation. There are car carriers that are loaded, going both ways. Publix truck went by, and he got his little, uh, GPS thing stuck on the wires, broke all the wires, left his GPS thing back quite very nicely, took it back to Publix, and asked if they would like it. Um, it's just way too much dangerous. We do have a lot of children, there's a lot of biking going by, and when two of those semi-trucks go by at the same time, going two different directions, it's kinda scary, cuz they only have like three inches between them. We are not looking for a roundabout on the, at the, at the light down there. We are just looking to some way to get the trucks to get off. There's two other options within like five minutes, so it's not like they, I mean, the log truck goes by, but he has to, cuz he's going to Peanuts, I know where he's going. But I, you know, I'm sure the farms need things, can they come from the other direction? Do they have to go through town? You know, it's that kind of a thing, but a big thing is, is it's, it's just kinda scary when you can't, you can't hear TV, you can't hear yourself talk, you can sit on your front porch, because it's too loud all day long. So, we would appreciate you, we've worked on this for like four years, and I have pictures up the kazoo if you wanna see them. I have things on my, on my phone from my Blink, if you'd like to see them, I keep it every day. So, anytime you wanna see, just let me know, and I'll be glad to share it with you, but not now.
Thank you ma'am.
My name is Tom Ritchie, I'm a resident of Floral City, a longtime resident. And this is anecdotal, but I can see that the increase in truck traffic, heavy truck traffic on forty-eight going through our little scenic town is astounding, and it has really grown. And I had to laugh when I was listening to Laura Hennings just describe. This morning, I was following an eighteen-wheeler. When I pulled out of Daniel's Drive onto forty-eight, I got behind this big truck, which went bouncing down through the Tunnel of Oaks, through Orange Avenue, over all those rough repairs that have been done, and, uh, got to the intersection to turn right or turn north onto forty-one, and had to stop because the person making a left-hand turn coming from Inverness had to back up so that he could make that turn. I just have to laugh thinking about that. Well, the thing is, uh, it is anecdotal, in my opinion, I mean, from my point of view, that the truck traffic is, has grown a lot. If you Google the route from I seventy-five and you're going to Inverness and beyond, maybe over to nineteen, to Crystal River, or into Inverness, to Walmart or whatever, Google will take you through Floral City, because it will save you about six miles of going north, rather than go all the way up to forty-four and then across to Inverness. It'll take you up forty-eight, because it's slightly angled. It's not an east-west corridor, it's a southeast to northwest corridor, so it saves you a few miles. What the trucks don't realize, I guess, if they're not really looking at a map, is this, forty-eight is a two-lane rural windy-turning road. It's forty-five miles an hour in Sumter County, and then gets to Citrus County, uh, and then thirty mile an hour zone through a little town to get to forty-one. And, of course, they don't follow those traffic, uh, speed limits, but continuing on up to get those extra six and a half miles or whatever, it's on a four-lane divided highway of I seventy-five, seventy mile an hour traffic, and then west on forty-four, sixty mile an hour or to fifty mile an hour all the way into Inverness. So, they more than make up time, so we don't have to feel sorry for truck drivers by cutting them off a little bit, a few, you know, a few miles, by taking them into Floral City. So, don't feel guilty or bad about supporting this, um, prospect, because we of Floral City would love to have our serenity back without these gigantic trucks, just one after another, being, being, uh, you know, guided through our town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, my name's Terry Hartman, and these are the petitions that we've gathered from people in Floral City, and we sent you some copies of them for today, some backup, but we're gonna keep these, because when this goes to the MPO and the FDOT, we're gonna be collecting data, pictures, whatever you need to support this. But even in my own family, it's like, where are the trucks gonna go? You can't stop the trucks. Well, there is a motor carrier's Rand McNally Atlas, and it tells the truckers where to go. There are transportation brokers who program where the trucks go, and they also have a trucker's GPS. So, if the weight limit's lowered for this road, it will stop the fire hose and bring it, eventually bring it down. So, there are technical reasons why, whatever we can do, the FDOT will know and the MPO will know. So, we certainly appreciate this long-term planning. We're looking, you know, we can go and put ribbons on the trees and all that, but this is the basic thing that will make the paving that you do cost-effective, and it will help the trees and help life in the community. So, thank you for supporting this, we hope you will.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? I will say, um, if none of the, thank, thanks to everyone that's on the Heritage Society, that's really great work that you guys are doing, it's not my district, but I love Floral City. If none of you have expertise in this, maybe someone that's listening does, and they could reach out to the Heritage Society, but in very recent past, I don't know if they still do this, but you can actually petition Google and Apple Maps to change suggested routing, just a thought, um, and just to, to make it go a little faster. That's just one idea, but, uh, I'm certainly gonna support it. Board, Commissioner Schleba.
I appreciate Commissioner Baze and you all bringing this to our attention. Um, since nineteen ninety-five, I've used that route, my husband and I, to go back to Sarasota to see our families, and I've always loved it. As soon as I became a commissioner and realized what was happening in your area, I stopped using that route, so I haven't gone down that route for a long time. So, I am, I was very surprised at the amount of trucks coming through there, because I was cognizant of just my car going through the Oaks. And so, um, I didn't realize, um, I knew there was some issues, like, like you brought up with the lumberyard and things, um, this board was, uh, there was a gas station a few years ago that had come forward, which we had voted against, because it would have brought a tremendous amount of traffic through that area. So, um, I am happy to support this. I, um, I, you answered my question, actually, I was gonna ask Commissioner Baze, how do you do that, how do you stop it? But by lowering the weight, um, very common sense, but thank you for doing this, and thank you Commissioner Baze for bringing this forward, I will wholeheartedly support it.
Commissioner Kennard, put his hand up next. Commissioner Kennard?
I've got some concerns about this. Um, I do wanna get the trucks off of that road, and I would support an effort to, to do that by lowering a weight, the weight limit on there, or, uh, you know, I don't know if there's, i- if passing a, it is a county road, so passing a local ordinance prohibiting truck traffic on that road, if that's a possibility, or are we talking about an entirely new route? If we're talking about a new road, a new route, now I've got a lot more concerns with that. You know, I, I would not want, I would not want, um, DOT to bring forward a plan that is Turnpike North, uh, under a different name. So, if we're, if we're talking about lowering weight limits on the road, not, not pulling new roads, um, through the county, then, then I can support that.
Commissioner Baze?
This has nothing to do with them providing a new, um, road. This is simply lowering the weight limit. In order to lower the weight limit, it affects two, two FDOT districts. So, that's why we have to go through this process at the state level, working through District Five and District Seven, because of that bridge and the truck, the weight, the, um, traffic coming off of seventy-five. I anticipate, um, of course, I can't, you know, there's no way for me to verify this, but what I think is happening is a lot of times, we all know how seventy-five gets bottlenecks, you know, particularly when it gets closer into, up to forty-four at the Turnpike, I mean, yeah, at the Turnpike, um, and I think what they're doing is looking for an alternative, so they're getting off on forty-eight and coming in and hitting forty-one and traversing around through the county wherever it is that they need to go. I also know that, um, Stagecoach is being used by trucks often to avoid a, uh, weigh station in Hernando. So, they're bypassing, coming around and hitting Stagecoach in order to, to eliminate a weigh station. So, I, I, it, it's complicated, but this is kind of everything that's going into it. The other thing that I would tell you is the, the oldest residential structure that we have in the county sets right there in Floral City, and that we've spent a tremendous amount of time in, um, people that are all here and saving that home, um, as part of our historic character of Citrus County, so for many reasons, not only for it being the scenic, uh, byway and preserving the trees as they, as they're getting older, but it's just the right thing to do. And I think this all starts out on seventy-five. This is a way to get the GPS and the Google coordinate, coordinates changed. And again, it's not costing us anything that the state's taking this on, and they're also going to be looking, um, and monitoring Stagecoach as they do this.
Any other board comments? Commissioner Finnegan?
I just wanna remind everyone, um, that I feel like the Avenue of the Oaks is as important to Floral City as Hunter Springs is to Crystal River. Um, it's so beautiful, and I'm sure you all from Floral City, uh, know, I am a bullfrog, and other people may not know what that means, but if you're from Floral City, you know. And, uh, you know, I've watched those trees over the years, they seem to, um, not be as maybe thick as they used to be, and maybe, I don't know if that's why, if these trucks are hurting them, but I applaud the efforts, we really need to protect that area, that's so important to the heritage of Floral City, so thank you.
Anything further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good job, Commissioner Baze. All right, I have nothing, uh, Madam Attorney?
Yes, thank you, we added P one, and that is to schedule an attorney-client session for, um, what day? For September fourth at nine AM. Uh, that was the, the day when we, the day and time when we could get, uh, the majority of everyone together. Uh, I don't believe, uh, I think one commissioner will not be available, but, uh, we need to have that, uh, attorney-client session to continue with our mediation in that case.
Okay, looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Baze, second by Commissioner Finnegan, so jinx moment. Um, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Open to the public. Anyone would like to address the board, you get three minutes, please watch the clock.
Janet Barak, Sitcher Springs.
Mike.
All right, the county.
Mike.
The county is growing, and we know that.
Did you state your name?
Yeah, I'll do it again, Janet Barak, Sitcher Springs.
I don't know, she was making a motion, so.
I know, that's okay. All right, so the county is growing, and we know that, we can't stop it, and we're trying to monitor it. Okay, so as it's growing, we're building, and building, and building. Well, what do you need to have if you were building? Well, the county really needs, and I hate to spend money, but they need more qualified building inspectors. Now, nobody from the building department told me to do this, it's all my own thing. We really need building inspectors out there, whether it's for commercial properties or residential properties, because we're allowing builders to come in and put in four and five hundred houses, two and three hundred houses, houses that are six to an acre, eight to an acre, four to an acre. You know, we've got all different standards for all the different projects going on. I have, I live in a place where there are three to an acre.
I have, I live in a place where there's three to an acre, okay? And it's, it's, it's amazing what doesn't get checked, and I see it because I live across the street from it. And then I turn it into the building department and they say, well, we don't have somebody can go out and do that unless you report it. Well, I report it because I'm a citizen that cares. I care about what my neighborhood's gonna look like, I care about if my neighbor's gonna have a decent house. You know, that's, that's part of being me, but the thing is, there are houses going up that aren't getting the extra attention and things do slide. We don't have the number of inspectors we had in 2007 or 2006. And they can say everything they want, well, this doesn't, that and the other. We need more qualified inspectors for all the different sections. And I know we have a lot of people coming and going and coming and going from our departments. But we, you know, there are some things that need to be addressed and, and, you know, you're to the budget part and the budget, you know, is very, very tight. But I want you to try and think of, of some way that the building department, and I think the building department is an enterprise project, if I'm not mistaken. So somewhere, somebody should be able to subsidize to add some more of these inspectors. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close, open to the public. All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Will you respond to?
Yes.
As far as I know, I, and yes, those positions would be funded, I believe, out of the enterprise fund, so that would not come out of the general fund. But I believe that we've given Eric all the positions that he's asked for. I don't think this board has said, has turned him down for anything, so. I certainly don't feel like it's the board's position to say, you need to hire X number more, when, I feel like when he needs those additional inspectors, he'll come forward and request it and I don't see any reason why this board would say no to such a request.
All right. Anyone else? Ms. Stanton?
Upcoming meetings, regular meetings, September 10th, 2024, at 1:00 p.m., Citrus County Courthouse, Room 101, 10 North Apopka Avenue, Inverness, Florida. Regular meetings, September 24th, 2024, at 1:00 p.m., Citrus County Courthouse. Regular meeting, October 8th, 2024, at 1:00 p.m., Citrus County Courthouse. Upcoming workshops and special meetings, tentative budget hearing, Wednesday, September 11th, 2024, at 5:01 p.m., Citrus County Courthouse. Final budget, September 24th, 2024, at 5:01 p.m., Citrus County Courthouse.
Thank you. And with that, we are recessed till 5:01.